Okay, good morning, everyone. I'll call the May 11th NCAC a general meeting to order. It's 10:01 a.m. Welcome, everybody, today to the meeting. It's a beautiful Saturday. A little bit warm. We have one agenda item today, and that is to hold the vote on the revised NCAC bylaws. This work began in the fall of last year. Through many meetings, including numerous feedback sessions, all held in accordance with Oregon Public Meeting laws, the process has come to a point where the committee feels it is time for a vote. I'll do my absolute best to follow all parliamentary procedures today for this process. This may or not, may not include things like amendments being proposed and substantive comments being made. To keep this moving towards the goal of holding a vote this morning, speakers will be allowed three minutes. Correct procedure today is critical, and Michael Beachley will be our guide regarding procedures at any point if needed. Everyone's voice is valued and also should feel comfortable speaking. But it's our hope that we'll keep it to substantive comments directed, right, directed directly related to this document. So, thank you. Brief introductions, we've got, of course, the officers are here today, and then the members of the Bylaw Committee, Nancy Van Delle, Chairperson, Michael Beachley, Tom Seep, Wyatt Angelo, Bill Miller, and Susan Schaumberg have our members of the Bylaws Committee, so welcome. We, I want to, I want to read the statement in terms of, and I think Tom might be able to put this on the screen. This is the process of adopting the bylaws revision. Tom, if you have that.
Actually, I didn't have custody of that document.
Oh, you didn't? I can put it on the screen, sorry.
Okay, okay. I'm just going to read through it. I'll give you a minute to put it on the screen, Nancy. Okay.
Not sure I got the right one. What can you see?
I can see process of adopting the bylaws. That's the one I have in front of me.
Great, that's, that's what it should be.
Okay.
And I also put in the chat these documents, if, if anyone would like to go in and look at them themselves, they're, they're in the chat.
Okay, great. Thanks, Nancy. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this. The Chair calls on the bylaws Subcommittee Chairperson to present, this is the process of adopting the bylaws revision for today. The Chair calls on the Bylaw Subcommittee Chairperson to present the report of the committee and make the motion to adopt. The Chair then calls on the Bylaw Subcommittee Chairperson to present each article of, each section of the, each article and section, I'm sorry, with major amendments noted. After each article or section, the Chair will ask if there are any amendments to that article or section. Members may offer amendments to any of the wording of an article or section by moving to amend as in, I move to amend Article 4, Section A4 to replace with whatever you would like to see. The Chair then calls for a second. If a second is given, and this just means that someone else is interested in hearing more, not that necessarily that they support the motion, but they may. Then the Chair restates the motion. The maker of the motion gives their rationale for the motion. Other members can then be recognized to argue for or against the motion to amend. The Chair then asks for a vote on the amendment, and if the amendment passes, then the amended language becomes part of the main motion. Once all of the bylaws articles have been presented individually, then the Chair will ask if there are any amendments or motions regarding the bylaws revision as a whole. Once this is, this is complete, then the main motion is voted on either as presented or as amended. This will be a majority vote. If you would like to speak today, please indicate this in the chat and say whether you would like to move to amend a motion or an amendment, speak to an amendment, and say whether you're for or against the amendment, have a question which is a point of inquiry, have another type of motion, or have a procedural question for the parliamentarian. You'll be called on by the Chairperson in order. Please limit any comments to three minutes. And then, lastly, just a note that Tillamook County has approved this bylaws revision and would need to approve any amendments to the proposal. So that's, that's the process we'll, we'll follow today. We, I think we can get started with, I believe, Nancy. You're, you're up next with walking us through, I think.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark. I'd like to first start with the report from the committee, and I think Michael talked in the parliamentary procedure training about, this has been an incredible committee to work with throughout the last year. Can't say enough about how hard everybody's worked and worked very cooperatively. It's been a fabulous experience, and also we'll talk toward the end of the report, but with the input and participation of many community members that have helped shape these bylaws. So the development of the Nescuin Citizen Advisory Committee bylaws revision was done with a focus on achieving transparency, participation, and inclusivity. The NCAC bylaws Subcommittee has consistently considered the history of the NCAC and member concerns as part of its deliberations. The process adopted by the Subcommittee went beyond the requirements of Oregon Public Meeting Law to give voice to extensive member comment during 17 formal Subcommittee meetings and nine informal bylaws feedback sessions. In addition, the Subcommittee processed many email and telephone conversations. Participants were also given insight into the thinking of the Subcommittee members individually and as a group. The proposed bylaws provide for specific member easy access to the meetings of the membership, officers and subcommittees of the NCAC, as well as its records. This philosophy also reflects the attitudes and practices of the current NCAC leadership. As proposed, the boundary of the NCAC area of responsibility is clarified and expanded to include the whole of the Nescuin watershed, recognizing the importance of having a voice in land use matters affecting our water supply and the strongly voiced desires by stakeholders outside of the original community boundary to be included. Residential ownership demography in Nescuin includes properties held in family trusts and LLCs. Therefore, the proposed language now extends membership access to holders of beneficial interests or trust beneficiaries and partners in LLCs with some limitations. Subcommittee members and participating NCAC members extensively discussed concerns that some individual properties held in trusts, LLCs, or fractional ownership could, and in some cases would, have large numbers of potential voters who could overamplify the influence of those with an interest in that single property on issues before the NCAC. As an example, when residents in Nescuin has 17 separately deeded fractional interests, each of which can have multiple owners. An overwhelming majority of those members participating in this discussion felt that some reasonable restrictions are necessary to avoid creating disproportionate representation of a single property and the resultant dilution of the voices and voting rights of other members. The proposed bylaws were revised so that all decisions of policy and importance remain with the membership as a body, retaining where appropriate the necessity for memorializing minority, as well as majority viewpoints for consideration by decision-making bodies. As drafted, the officers are provided only those powers and charged with those obligations necessary to facilitate the business of the NCAC and its membership. To that end, the bylaws create a framework for efficiencies for conducting the business of the NCAC through the creation of an executive board. The proposed bylaws generally follows the suggested structure set forth in Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised 12th Edition, which is our parliamentary authority. It has also been reformatted with article and section numbers for ease of reference, which are absent from the current bylaws. Transition, per Robert's rules in these bylaws, the proposed bylaws take effect immediately upon adoption. Some issues with transition exist this first year. For example, the proposed bylaws moves the officer election meeting from June to April. However, the adoption meeting is in May, so, for the bylaws, that's this meeting. So the officer election will need to be the June meeting for this year only. Also, some items in the existing bylaws are being moved to a new policies and procedures document, which you may see as P and P occasionally. Work on this document will begin this spring and likely through the coming year. So these items will necessarily be in transition. This is a complex document, and some minor editorial changes may need to be made. We will include in the adoption motion the flexibility to make those changes with notice, but no need for a further vote. The Bylaw Subcommittee is deeply grateful for the contributions of those who attended and spoke at its meetings and feedback sessions, as well as commented by email and telephone, including the current and past officers of the NCAC. These proposed bylaws are as much a product of those participants as well as the members of the Subcommittee. We also thank Sarah Absher, Tillamook County Director of Community Development, for her extraordinary time, advice, and support throughout the process, and Commissioner Doug Olson, Vice Chair of the Board of County Commissioners for Tillamook County, for his interest in participation. Finally, our appreciation for tech support and communications assistance goes to TechQuiz NCAC Secretary Jeff Weitzel. Sincerely, Wyatt Angelo, who drafted quite a bit of this report, thank you Wyatt, Michael Beachley, our scribe, Bill Miller, who couldn't be here today, but was quite a participant, Susan Schaumberg, who will be monitoring the chat today, and Tom Sype, our editor extraordinaire, and from myself. So, now on to the motion. Do you have the motion up, Tom, or do I need to throw that up?
The, the motion is yours. I have the, the text.
Okay, I've got it here. It's hiding. So, on behalf of the NCAC Bylaw Subcommittee, and with the approval of Tillamook County Council, I move that the present bylaws be rescinded and the bylaws revision submitted by the committee be adopted with the following provisos. One, defer move of the officer election until the end of the year, which was Article 4, Section B, Officer Elections. That should be a two, recognize that items to be specified in the new policies and procedures will be accomplished throughout the remainder of this fiscal year and the next with consideration by the membership. And three, you're just going to change that right now. It's bothering me. And three, authorize the Bylaw Subcommittee to correct article and section designations, punctuation, and cross-references, and to make such other technical and conforming changes as may be necessary to reflect the intent of the NCAC. And no second is required because it's coming from the committee. I'm going to stop sharing. So at this point, Mark, would you like me to, for Tom to share the bylaws, and we'll talk about Article 1?
Yes, please. Thank you.
There is a question, and someone has a question in the chat.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I should have said it's Tom or had it. She hasn't.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, Tom.
It sounded to me, Nancy, like you were moving to approve all of the bylaws together, and I guess you just clarified. Is, if there were a second on that, would we, would you proceed to do that?
So, the second just isn't necessary because all a second means is that there's one other person that wants to discuss the issue, and it's coming from committee, so there's automatically a second. But what's happening with the process is that this will be considered, they call it "siri autumn", so the main motion is made, and then we will be going through each article and section individually and an opportunity, describing what the changes will, that are being made, the major amendments. And then, there'll be an opportunity for people to make amendments to, to any of those at that time. So with each section, I will present the, the, that article, and Mark will ask if there are any questions or amendments to be made. And, but we will not be voting on the main motion, the main motion I just made, until the very end, whether it's amended or whether it's, whether it's as is. So, so that's, that's kind of what we're doing, Tom.
Thanks for the clarification.
Tom Sype has a point of information in the chat.
Yeah, Tom, go ahead.
On your first, your first number says till the end of the year. Does that mean the end of the fiscal year, the end of the calendar year? When, not quite sure what that meant. You didn't.
Yeah, and it means the end of the fiscal year. Thank you for the clarification. So the fiscal year is the end of June.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay.
But it could mean neither way.
Oh, yeah.
Because really, what we're talking about is next year's election will be in April, as the bylaws, proposed bylaws say, so it'll only be this, this year's election that are affected, that's affected, but to be precise, we could say the end of the fiscal year. So, how about, I move to amend my own motion to say. We can do that at the end. We, we can do that at the end, so.
Okay.
Because we're, well, we'll consider, so basically, we're going to consider item by item, and then at the end, we'll be considering the overall motion, the overall bylaws with, so we'll, we'll correct that little, little thing at the end. So why don't you move to amend at the, at the, at the end, Tom?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Go ahead.
Thank you, and for those of you who are joining us, documents are in the chat if you wanted to actually see them yourself. So, Article 1 is the name of the organization. If you want to see the list of amendments, it's in the, the, the third document called the Bylaws Revision Packet. It's in the packet, and that's been sent out a number of times to the membership. So, we had no changes to Article 1. It's, it stands alone. So I, as we mentioned in our introduction, the structure has changed, so it's Robert's Rules of Order. Everything's been, if you want to see how things moved, there's a red line document at the end of the Bylaws Revision Packet that shows, that shows exactly how everything moved from the old structure to the new. If you want to just, if you're a bylaws geek and would like to see what all we did, that, that shows. So, so that's Article 1, Mark.
Okay, any amendments to that section, Article 1?
Barry Jopron has a question. He has a raised hand.
Okay.
Yeah, the screenshot that I'm looking at is so big, and I can't, can't figure out how to squeeze it down. So, Tom, can you, like, lower the, the resolution on your screen?
Um.
Now at the bottom, little slide bar.
I can.
Anybody else having the same problem?
Do you mean you want it to be smaller?
It's smaller, yeah. It's so big, it fills up the entire screen, I'm like.
Oh, it will, because when we do a screen share, that's just what happens. We don't have.
No, but he's got it enlarged. If you look at the bottom, there's a slide bar.
Is that better or worse?
Is that better?
Now I can read it. Thank you.
Interesting. Is that better for other people too? Because I'm having trouble reading it.
Oh, I can't, I can't, I can't read that. It's so.
Um, we're gonna have to.
Compromise.
I would suggest that you download the, the document and look at it that way, because people not being able to read it because it's too small is.
Can you put the link?
And there, in the top.
Can you put the link?
The link is in the chat.
The link is in the.
There's a.
The link is in the.
Sorry, there's an options button on the top right, and you can pick if you want it to fit to window 50%, 100%. Like, you can adjust the size on your own computer. That might help.
The top of what?
The top of your Zoom screen? Should, I have on mine, it just shows a drop-down menu with view options.
And then, view options?
Yeah.
Exit full screen, I guess?
That might help too.
No, that didn't do anything.
I just, it gives.
All right, I'll try, I see main motion to adopt the bylaws link, that's.
The one above that, the one above that says.
If, if I came in later, I won't see the stuff you posted earlier. Apparently, I came in after you posted the link, and somebody reposted the link, so I can look at it, please?
Really? Is that true for other people? You can't see the earlier chats?
That's correct.
Oh, shoot.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Jeff, could you repost these links? I guess I could. I can just copy and paste, I think. Okay, can you see it now?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay.
That's interesting. Let me put them all up.
I thought we'd seen all of the problems with Zoom. Apparently, we haven't.
Yeah, we're learning as we go.
Okay, back to Article 1. I did not hear any amendments to Article 1.
And let me just clarify again for those who are, who are just joining us. We don't, because we're sharing, we can't see everybody. So if you have a question or a comment, please put it into the chat. We happen to see Barry's hand raised, but we won't always, so. Thank you. So, yeah, I will be quiet now, Mark.
Okay. Article 2, Nancy, is next.
Okay, so for Article 2, it's the object of the organization. The main changes here, and, and let me just say, if we didn't have to make a change, we erred on the side of keeping things the way they were. But we didn't have any, we just reworded for clarity, but we didn't actually make any changes to the object. There was some reorganization from the way it was in the earlier bylaws, but there's no change. So does anyone want me to read Article 2 object, or do you want to move on to Article 3? It is an important thing, and I mean, it, it does say that the, and I know that earlier groups developing the bylaws spent a lot of time on this, that the NCAC is a group of citizens that acts as an advisory body to county, state, and federal government agencies. The NCAC is dedicated to promoting communications between citizens and government bodies on land use and other relevant issues. In all activities, NCAC shall provide for and encourage increased citizen participation. Activities shall be determined by the membership and include, but not be limited to making recommendations on applicable government bodies on land use, environmental impacts, public safety, and public health, so not just land use. Take actions as needed to suggest community plan and county code amendments, advocating for consideration of county services, conducting special community studies, and pursue other matters as deemed relevant by the membership. And I think that's it, right, Tom?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Uh, any amendments to Section 2? Okay, I don't, I don't hear any or see any.
Okay, so Article 3 was our big article that we spent two feedback sessions and many, many, many meetings on. And, and I think we were pleased when we got done with our feedback sessions. I think there was general concurrence with, with what we've done. Sarah Absher spent quite a bit of time with the county attorney on this, getting approval for these, these areas, these things. So, Section A is the NCAC area. We basically did not change the area. We clarified the wording to define it. So, it clarif, so the wording is to encompass the Nescuin watershed within Tillamook County. Current members remain within the boundary.
I apologize. I was trying to do something fancy, and I messed up, so.
Okay.
We just.
So, okay. So, Tom, can you go to the map?
Yes.
So we can actually show. So the map will be in the Policies and Procedures document, but we've wanted you guys to see it. And can, Tom, can you talk about the, the map?
Okay, the map is actually a composite of a couple of different maps. So, it, it's been noted that there's not a little bit of a discrepancy between the two. But basically, this is a map of the watershed of Nescuin and the area that's, that I call kind of a teal. Other people call it different colors. Is the, what is known as a community boundary. And that's the official thing that's been dictated by the state as to what the community boundary of Nescuin is. Now, many of our participants in NCAC live in the Slab Creek area and this area here. The idea here is that we, this is areas that directly impact the quality of the life in Nescuin. This took a long process. Initially, we started with the kind of a vague from Canary Hill down to Slab Creek Road. And that was the definition. So we sought to make it a bit more defined, and that evolved. There was at least 22 different versions of this before we finally settled on this one.
And we, we do want to thank Bill Bush for the idea of the watershed, I think.
Yeah.
That made a big difference for us.
That immediately gelled, that, that the suggestion to use the watershed. People just immediately gravitated towards that, and it was general acceptance, not, not unanimous, but general acceptance.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we go back to the wording? So, Mark, I, I think I'd like to, because these are really key sections, I'd like to stop here and ask.
Go section. Okay. Are there any amendments to Article 3, Section A?
So, Roger, are you up?
I'm sorry. I'd like to make an amendment that the membership be limited to those who reside on a business or own property within the official Nescuin community boundary.
So, Tom, if you can stop sharing, I'm gonna throw Roger's.
Okay.
Amendment up.
If I could find where to stop. Ah, there it is.
Okay. Can people see, whoops? There, okay, looks like you can see it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Roger's put an amendment on the floor. Is there a second?
I would second that. It's Hillary.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Hillary. Okay, I'll, and it's in front of us, but I'll, I'll just read it. He's moving to amend Article 3, Section A, to define the NCAC area to be the official community boundary instead of the Nescuin watershed in Tillamook County. We can have discussion on this now after Roger speaks to the rationale.
Yes, I, I want to apologize to all of you who have attended the Bylaws Committee's meeting because I'm sure you're nauseated after listening to me make this argument over and over. But I'd like to read my argument one last time. And that is that it's been well established that any recommendations to the Board County Commissioners from the NCAC that could result in new ordinances and rules affecting the Nescuin community, including land use, zoning, and the new community development plan apply only to the official Nescuin community boundary as established by Tillamook County, the State of Oregon, and as well outlined by the, on the map, on the NCAC website. Therefore, I fail to understand how anyone could possibly justify allowing people who live outside that boundary to be voting members of the NCAC. This, to me, defies the basic fundamentals of democratic voting. The situation has been exacerbated, exacerbated by the proposed increased size of the membership bounty to encompass the watershed, which will increase the number of members who live outside the official boundary. I have been repeatedly told that this maneuver is justified in the name of inclusiveness and equity. However, it's obvious that the inclusiveness in this scenario results in total inequity. How can it possibly be equitable for a large number of people to vote for recommendations? How can it possibly be equitable for a large number of people to vote for recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on land use issues and the new community development plan, when any resulting ordinances, rules, and recommendations do not apply to them equally? It's also been argued that since these are recommendations only, that uh it doesn't matter. As far as I'm concerned, if these recommendations are that insignificant, then so is the uh uh CAC process uh entirely. The, I make this argument without any animosity to those living outside the official boundary. The size of the boundary is insignificant, as long as it is established by the will of those included, and is the official boundary where the vote of each member affects all members equally. This is especially important uh with the new community development plan, which will the recommendations of which will affect only those people living within the official community boundary. And will affect them for the next twenty years. It's very possible the majority of people voting on these new recommendations will live with outside outside of that boundary. I'm actually going to be sad if the current proposed membership criteria are accepted, because in my opinion, it'll greatly reduce the credibility of the NCAC and invalidate any new ordinances passed by the County Commissioners based on NCAC recommendations. And I want to thank you for your time for for the last time. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Okay, um, we'll open it to discussion. So Roger's uh explained his rationale. And now is there uh somebody who's um maybe against that motion?
Mark.
Kind of go back and forth.
In the chat.
Okay.
Speak in opposition to the amendment, and there are other people after that in the chat.
Okay, Tom, go ahead, Tom.
This is Tom. Uh, I support the bylaws subcommittees' language and speak in opposition to Roger's amendment. Uh, Roger, you don't nauseate me at all, and uh I greatly respect your community service. Um, and I'll I'll make this short. I think it 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 is, I don't think it was ever clear or precise as to what the boundary should be. Uh, th- this boundary is not only more more inclusive than others that were sug- suggested. It doesn't exclude anybody that has has acted and as a member and voted as a member in the past. But it also is pertinent to our most important natural resource, which is water, which is becoming more and more clear as we go through the com- community planning process that that to all of us, that that's a finite resource that we really have to protect. So um, I speak in favor of the, uh, to sum it up, in favor of the bylaws subcommittees' language and in opposition to Roger's motion.
Thank you, Tom.
The next one in the chat, Tom's side, who would like to speak against the motion?
I guess it would be appropriate if anybody wanted to speak for the motion.
Yeah, I I was gonna ask if anybody, and then we'll get we'll get to uh maybe if we don't. So is there anybody who would uh would like to speak in support of the motion? Okay. I don't hear anybody. So uh, Tom, you have the floor.
There are several reasons I oppose this amendment. Uh, first, the NCAC exists because Tillamook County wanted the CACs to help them get citizen inputs from the many unique individual communities in Tillamook. Uh, they directed us to be inclusive rather than exclusive, to get the widest possible range of opinions. Uh, the effect of this amendment would be to go against that direction and exclude people who are currently included. We have indications from the county that they will reject such a limitation on the inputs they desire. Second, the NCAC is about more than land use. As Article Two states, in addition to land use, we have environmental, safety, and public health in our charter. Uh, these issues touch more people uh than the relatively small area that the state defined as a Nescuin community boundary. Last but most important is the is that the overwhelming majority of citizens who participated in the process of updating these bylaws wanted to formally establish the NCAC area as the Nescuin watershed. Uh, this boundary is not so much of a change as it is a better definition where our mutual interests lie. I believe it would be a disservice to the Nescuin community to shrink the NCAC area down to the Nescuin community boundary. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
The next one to the chat is Wyatt Angelo.
Okay, Wyatt?
Yeah, thank you. Initially, as a matter of disclosure, I'm on the bylaws committee, so um, we considered this uh um at length, probably a third of our discussions uh and uh feedback sessions were devoted to this topic. Um, the core assumption of the amendment is that the county will not consider NCA views on matters affecting areas outside of the original community boundary. And our discussions and feedback sessions had county officials uh participating in those as well as observing them, as well as the county attorney who has reviewed this language, and we don't have any indications that would support that uh proposition and assumption. Secondly, I I think the idea that we are going to shrink the ba- existing boundaries down to the original community boundary disenfranchises um those of our members who have participated um in the NCAC in the past from participating in the future in any meaningful way. And lastly, I would suggest that if we want to have any credible voice about what happens to do in with respect to development or matters within the watershed, we need to include the watershed within our boundary. Thank you.
Thank you, Wyatt.
Mark, question. Hillary has a question in the chat.
Okay, Hillary?
Thanks. I'm not sure if this is the time to ask a question um with the procedures, but I think I just heard Wyatt say that. I just wanted to clarify. So, do the recommendations made by an expanded boundary apply only within the Nescuin community growth boundary, or would they apply within every the the new Nescuin CAC boundary? Because I I was under the impression that recommendations still would only apply within the community growth boundary as defined by Tillamook County, but I don't know if I misinterpreted what Wyatt just said. It sounded like.
What?
If we're making.
I can.
With the watershed. You know, if this is the goal to make recommendations for the watershed, but we do our, do the NCAC recommendations apply to the watershed, or are they limited to the community grow- growth boundary?
Uh, perhaps I can clarify a little bit. Um, having edited that uh document, I've looked at it a great deal. Uh, essentially, we are a creature of the county. Uh, we exist on their behalf. Uh, but however, we've also been given license to talk to other entities such as state and federal agencies. Unless, so some of the things we will discuss in the NCAC will apply only to uh the community boundary. Others will uh extend far beyond that. So it's sort of a mixed bag. It's not very, it's not straightforward. Uh, there are certain issues, as I said, that will be solely in the community boundary. But there were, there's room for discussion and decisions and recommendations uh outside that area.
Thank you. Could we specifically define what those would be then? Because I think there's a lot of confusion around that.
Uh, we've attempted to do that in uh Article Two. Uh, where it lists the fact that the uh, if I can put up Article Two.
And we're asking if you have any questions, to please put them in the chat or any comments um and and specify what what you're going to be asking.
So what we're talking about is I make recommendations to applicable governmental bodies, not just the county on land use. Of course, that is just the county. Uh, environmental impacts, public safety, public health. Uh, environmental impact speaks directly to the watershed. And then we can advocate and uh that. So, what would you add to that that would make it clearer?
Um, I think I would add something about what's inside, what kind of recommendations would be applying just to the community growth boundary, and what would be with the larger Nescuin uh NCAC boundary.
So Hillary, may I just ask, uh, would it be, we're gonna be tackling policies and procedures to put in more detailed kinds of information, and would that be something that we could discuss when we get to policies and procedures to give a little more specific kinds of things like that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, yeah, you guys, I don't, you guys definitely know the bylaws better than than anybody, so whatever you think would be appropriate.
Yeah, I I think that that would be a very, see, we wanted to have the 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 bones for action for the NCAC here in the bylaws. But the actual nuts and bolts of how things work and what kinds of things are appropriate is really what the the reason that we decided we needed a policies and procedures. Otherwise, we'd just start going down uh too much detail, and it's already ten pages. You don't want to, you don't want to look at fifty pages. I'm guessing.
Okay, thank you, Hillary.
Guy Seabird had his hand raised, and then there is a comment, there are comments in the chat, first by John Wickland, but Guy had his hand raised first.
Okay, and then I see Jeff. Okay, so. Let's see. Uh. Joan, Joan has a comment.
Um, I think you can call on her to ask. She can, she can ask.
Joan, Joan, would you like to uh ask your, make your comment? Joan Wickland? Okay.
Well, um, she may be trying to turn on her mic. I, let me just say.
Okay.
Uh, Joan's comment was, why can't the official community boundary be changed? It seems like that would solve the problem. Those who have participated in the past would still be eligible, and anything that they vote on would also affect them, not just those within the official boundary. And Joan, we heard you, and we we spent quite a bit of time with Sarah Absher on this very question, um, because it it would help quite a bit if we could change the community boundary. But uh, according to Sarah, this was set, I believe it was back in the nineteen nineties, it's possibly in the eighties, but so many decisions have been made with that official boundary that would uh changing it would cause uh a lot of uh a lot of cost and turmoil uh involving going back and having to revisit decisions that were made before, and the county cannot do it. We've been told just absolutely they cannot do it. So, thank you for your question on that.
Okay, just looking in the chat, it looks like Jeff and then Guy. Uh, Jeff, uh, you'd like to speak against the amendment, Jeff?
Well, well, Guy had his hand raised first.
Okay, okay. It looks like you're, it's okay. Guy, go ahead.
Well, I I don't want to uh speak one way or the other to uh the amend, the proposed amendment, but just to clarify, uh, there, uh, I'm a member of the uh County Planning Commission. The last two uh sessions, we've had hearings, we've had, have dealt with issues in a rural residential two zone. Uh, one dealing with a recreational campground, uh, one dealing with a recreational vehicle use uh also within that zone. There's plenty of our our two zones that are within our watershed that are not within our community boundary, and I can, I would suggest that this community would want to have input into those land use decisions that would be within our watershed, not within our community boundary. And I can say also that the Planning Commission and County Commissioners would listen to those recommendations, because those uses would definitely impact the community we live in.
Thank you, Guy. Thank you. Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, Guy Guy probably said ninety percent of what I wanted to say. But uh.
What's the other ten?
Okay, but but I'm speaking against the amendment, like when 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 the the county at like like formed the the CAC, it was because they wanted a a body to help the community of Nescuin speak to the county, uh, among other things. And the community of Nescuin isn't like, even though we happen to have a line on the map that have that that pertains to how land use regulations are formed, which is the Nescuin community boundary, that is not just the community of of uh the 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 community of Nescuin extends beyond that, and the county wanted to hear from the whole community of Nescuin, people on Slab Creek, people up up in the hills. Um, not just the people who live in the village and nearby. So, we happen to have a a job ahead of us where there are land use regulations that or or land use matters that only pertain inside the community boundary. And it it happens to have fallen to the CAC to work on that. And it's just our job to make sure that that the county sees that that we're doing that in the right way, and the the um voices of the people inside the community boundary are are being heard in the right way in that process. But as Guy just alluded to, we we, there's also things inside our community boundary where, like like there's 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 land use issues outside the community boundary that that uh, the county also wants to hear from it, from from us, from the from the people who live in 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 the NCAC area. And thinking of like, oh, like, like, like dividing us into little boxes. Some of us live inside the community boundary, some of us live up on Slab Creek Road defeats the purpose of us acting as a community and discussing all these things together. So I think if if you if you're if you're kind of tunnel visioned in on the fact that that we're gonna, we're doing, we're undertaking a process that deals with land use that happens to be inside the community boundary, and and not everyone in the NCAC with a with the right to vote lives inside the community boundary. Like, you're you're, I I think that's too narrow view of what we're doing here, so. I'm done.
Thank you, Jeff. Um. Okay, Michael. Um, Michael?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, uh, good, good conversation, good discussion. Um, it seems to me that uh, there is, um, there are issues that will apply to the people within the community boundary and issues that will apply to the the watershed uh community. Uh, they may be different issues. Uh, and for all intents and purposes, there may be differing perspectives and values associated with answers to those particular issues. Um, I would recommend um strongly in any of those discussions that since we are obliged to provide to the county um affirmative and negative, uh, positive and negative um uh positions um that we make sure that those who are outside of the boundaries are recognized uh i- in their in their position uh as uh being different in some respects to those who are inside the community boundary. In other words, to make a clear distinction to the county that there uh that there are differences of opinion and uh and 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 so on and so forth. That can be done pretty easily uh so that um the county takes into consideration those differentials. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. And Hillary has a, Hillary, would you like to speak to your comment?
No, just, I just didn't.
Okay. Okay, uh, okay, I'll go ahead and read it, just so everyone. So, thank you for clarifying, uh, Hillary. Since thank you for clarifying, I think clearly delineating within the bylaws about what types of recommendations would apply within NCGB versus NCAC boundary would be important. Thanks, Hillary. Okay, any other comments for or against?
Uh, Mark, uh.
Yes.
Guy Seabird, sorry.
Yeah.
Fun, I'm trying to get my uh hand raised. But anyways, I just want, I just want to.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Just for clarification, we do not have a growth boundary. And I think it's important, and I and I I know that the terms of community boundary and growth boundary get uh entertain, used, used, inter uh, you know, together, back and forth and whatever, but they it, there are legal differences uh between the two, and Nescuin has a community boundary, not a growth boundary. There, uh, just to make sure that we're all clear on that.
Thank you. And and Guy, I'm gonna ask again if you could please uh go in the chat instead of raising your hand. Uh, we, it's difficult sometimes to tell. But thank you for your your comment.
Uh, yeah. Okay. Any other comments? All right, I don't see any. Well, uh, at this time, we'll call, I'll call for the vote uh on this amendment. And so I believe uh everybody's going to have an opportunity to vote on this. Uh Jeff, uh we'll put it on the screen.
So we're, we're at twenty-five of twenty-nine, um voting twenty-six. So we're waiting for two more people. And I'm, I'm gonna end the poll because it looks like those two people are not gonna vote. And um, I am not able to vote because I'm hosting the meeting. Um, so I'm gonna voice vote, but, but here I'm ending the poll and share results. So from the poll we have.
And Joan, uh, before you read the results, Jeff, Joan said she couldn't see the poll. So Joan, if you'd like to say verbally what you, whether you vote in favor or against, please do so.
Yeah.
Or, or put it in the chat.
Or put it in the chat.
I think before you said you had trouble on muting, so.
Yeah.
Um, and Jeff, I think you wanted, uh, you, you would vote separately because you can't vote.
Right, so, so uh, so there are four out of twenty-seven um in favor or, or in favor of the amendment. And twenty-three out of twenty-seven opposed to the amendment. I am, and Joan is gonna vote in favor of the amendment, so that makes five out of twenty-eight. And I am going to vote against the amendment, so that makes twenty-four out of thirty.
Twenty-four out of thirty, okay.
Okay, and you're recording all that, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, Roger, I would just like to say thank you for taking the time and making the effort to do the amendment and um and for giving us uh an opportunity to be able to throw it up on the screen correctly. And, and thank you for your participation throughout this process. So appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, Roger. Thank you.
So I, I think you need to pronounce the motion is.
Oh, okay, so the motion has failed, the vote was uh twenty-four opposed and I think six in favor, so the motion.
Five, five in favor.
Five in favor, I'm sorry. Is that right, Jeff? Five in favor?
But five in favor out of thirty, twenty-four.
Okay, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Oh, twenty-four, okay, got it, okay. All right, um. Let's see, uh, section, Article Three, Section B, uh Nancy, I think we're ready for that one.
Okay, so if there are no more amendments on Section A, we will move on to Section B. And this is the other area that had considerable discussion. Um, and um, what we, what we've done is we defined the member types for resident, property owner and business owner. And the formal definitions are in Article Ten. I think we had three lawyers at this point working with Tom Syke. Um, and on this, uh, on this language and it's, it's quite tight, it's tightened up quite a bit from what it was before. And Tom, being an editor, put in uh more English language versions of, of these uh definitions up in here. And then the, the formal ones are down in Article Ten. So um, membership is open to all persons who identify as a member of the Nescuin community or at least eighteen years old and have at least one of the following qualifications within the NCAC area. A resident, someone who lives here at least six months of the year, a property owner, someone who owns property here and business owner, someone who owns a business here. Um, for each property, up to four authorized persons can qualify for membership and voting purposes for each category type. Any individual who qualifies for membership shall have only one vote regardless of how many types of uh qualifications they have. So uh, this is a new thing, this is a limit uh that was put in because of the, the, what we said in our report about uh the concern that there could be one property that could have an inordinate number of, of votes. Um, and it took quite a, a bit of effort on the count, on Sarah Absher's part. But the county council uh did come back, uh, we had proposed two, uh, a maximum of two per property. He came back and said he would accept um a maximum of uh four. So uh, that uh, that, that is the, the approval. So um, basically, that's what we came down on and, and in our feedback sessions, we had two. Uh, this was something that people generally all uh could get to, could agree on. I, we were actually kind of pleasantly surprised. We had a lot of discussion on this area. So um, that's, that's what we have.
Okay. Uh, any amendments to section, this section or article? Let me see, there are some comments. Okay, are there any amendments? I don't.
Um, it sounds like Jeff may have a question or something.
So it, but let's finish this article and then I'll talk.
Okay. Okay.
You want to wait, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Tom Prohoditch. Has a comment.
Tom Prohoditch?
Yeah, I have a, I have a comment. I, I, I support the bylaws subcommittee's um, final version of this. As, as they well know Nancy and Michael and Wyatt and Tom and Susan, I had nothing to say about. Uh, there's one word in this whole document that uh, I, I, if I thought the county would approve it, uh, I would oppose, which is the word four instead of two, which is what I, I uh I argued for over and over again. However, I am convinced that in listening to Sarah on more than one occasion, that they were never going to accept two. That they, that they, that they did think it was fair to try to place the limitation on how many people could vote for the very reason that Nancy specified in her introductory remarks. Uh, but they also said, this is the first time that any CAC in Tillamook County has requested such a change and we're just not going to do it. So uh, there's only, so I support this. Uh, I think it's an improvement over what existed. It's certainly more precise. And uh, and the more I've thought about it, there's not too much difference between four and two. Uh, so that, that's just a comment.
Thank you, Tom. Guy, you've got your hand up, is, do you need to?
Are you? Guy, are you? I think he, I think he left it up after.
Yeah, okay.
That, that might be pertinent to my item.
Okay. All right, I think Nancy, uh, so I, I didn't hear any amendments for uh Article Three, Section B. So we can move on to Section C.
Okay, so um, Section C, um, we didn't have any change.
Well, can, now, now that we're done with Section B, can, can I?
Okay, yes, I didn't know, I didn't know when you wanted to speak, Jeff, but yeah, go ahead.
So uh, um. So, so uh, someone, um, I, I, I'll, I'll say someone uh direct messaged me and said that they had voted incorrectly on, on Roger's amendment. And I don't know if like, like the, the, is it, can we change it or is like the total is the total and like, like we're, we're done, so?
No, you cannot change it. Once it's recorded, it's, it's there.
All right, well, it doesn't change the result of the vote, um, and also changing it would be kind of weird, so.
Right.
All right, um, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so for member access, um, we didn't change this. It's a copy of the NCAC bylaws, meeting notes, agendas and other relevant documents shall be available on the NCAC website. I think we may have actually changed it slightly, tweaked it to just make sure it was available to everybody um on the website. Because the older, the other bylaws had um availability to the officers and that kind of thing. But these days, uh Jeff and the officers have done a terrific job of making sure everything's accessible.
All right, any amendments uh to uh Article Three, Section C? Don't see any. All right, Nancy?
Okay, so Article D or Section D, um, it just clarified, so the first part of it is uh no change. Membership in the NCAC extends full rights of participation, including the right of voting in NCAC meetings. Um, the second part is new and required by the county. Voting and declaration of membership shall be on the honor system. And basically what that means is there isn't going to be any policing of votes and, and membership. We don't have the capability of doing that and um so we're um but we have come to realize that that should not be a problem. And Wyatt, would you like to comment about your, your experience as a prosecutor, a federal prosecutor on the honor system?
Yeah, a very small percentage of people are inclined to uh to buck um rules like this and that those people are few and far between. Um, it seems to me that on a situation like this, uh, we have a number of people in this uh and this uh association who are in fact very honorable, so it seemed like it was unnecessary.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any amendments to uh Section D? All right, I do not hear any, Nancy.
Okay, I think we're on to Article Four, we're making progress. So on Article Four, it's about officers. Um, and uh, in this first section, we are listing the elected officers uh at the beginning and we're changing chair to chairperson uh for Robert's roles. And um, so uh, the officers remain the same, however, uh of the core. And then we're introducing um the position of immediate past chairperson to serve as an ex officio officer for the first year of the new chairperson's term to provide uh continuity and support. And we thank Barbara Triplet for that suggestion. It's not a required position, they may serve. We've also um established a parliamentary position um as an appointed officer, subject to ratification by the membership. And we'll discuss that under the uh, both of these later, under the duties of the officers. Um, and uh, this is a, the no officers of the NCAC should receive any financial payment. Um, but they may be reimbursed and there's no change there. So I think we could go into the duties of officers unless anybody has any questions about that first section. Okay. So with the chairperson, we've uh, with the uh agreement of Mark and the officers, we're removing the authority of the chairperson to appoint subcommittee members. They will be elected. Um, and uh, otherwise, the, it also changes the planning of general meeting agenda, agendas from the chairperson to coordinating the meeting agendas with the executive board. Otherwise, the items are the same for chairperson. For vice chairperson, um, we've uh added serving as the chair for any reason that the chairperson needs to vacate the chair instead of just if they're not attending. So for example, chair, someone chairing a uh meeting needs to stay neutral. So if the chairperson wants to make their own motion or have an opinion, they should turn the gavel, the virtual gavel over to the vice chair for that portion of the meeting. And then also assist the chairperson and the other officers as needed as opposed to just the chairperson. So we tried to flesh out the vice chairperson's role a little bit. For secretary, um, we did quite a bit of reorganizing and reducing the redundancies of the duties, but a, a lot of them are still intact. And we added that the secretary holds ultimate responsibility for NCAC communications, but shall delegate communications task to a new communications task force, which we will describe as in Article Seven. So um, are there any questions about secretary? Um, some of this, when we go into policies and procedures next year, we may possibly change this a little bit in, in the future, but this is what we want for now. For treasurer, this is, for some reason, there's one little hitch um in our uh discussions with uh, with the county. Um, we had originally put, the original bylaws had that the treasurer would uh uh get two signatures on checks. And as we've discussed this with Chris, um, they don't typically use checks uh anymore because a lot of the payments that are made uh are online for say the website hosting fee and the Zoom fee and that kind of thing, where you just use, they use a debit card. So the, the county council has approved our statement here, uh Bullet Three, which is to uh change getting two um signatures on checks to make approved payments from the NCAC checking account in a timely manner. And then in the policies and procedures, we'll state that if checks are used, two signatures required, um, but debit cards are permitted. Otherwise, under treasurer, we changed preparing to coordinate with other officers in the preparation of the budget. And we moved the budget line uh to the top because that's kind of the start of the fiscal year. Um, and then uh we clarified the preparation and present, presentation of financial reports uh to have those written at regular meetings. We um added uh, having the annual, preparing an annual financial report to the membership at the end of the year that includes gross receipts and disbursement uh at the June meeting. And then we added uh an optional, if required by the executive board, ensure that financial records are audited by a volunteer selected by the executive board at the end of each fiscal year. So our budget's not big, it's, it's, you know, less than two thousand dollars a year. Uh, but that, that's, we, we kind of tightened up some of the financial things a little bit. And, and Chris supports all this. So that our new position of immediate past chairperson um is to uh advise the chairperson and other officers as requested and assist with transition of the new officers to the new executive board. Um, so that's if the current, the, the leave, the chairperson who's leaving is willing to do it. And if the new officers would like to, to have that position. Uh, parliamentarian, uh, this is something that I particularly wanted as we came in and, and Michael as well uh to have this position um is to, the, the duties of the parliamentarian are to attend NCAC membership and executive board meetings and give advice and parliamentary procedure when requested. Um, the parliamentarian shall be entitled to all rights and privileges of membership, including the right to make motions, debate and vote. And the parliamentarian is a non-voting member of the executive board. Should the parliamentarian wish to make a motion or to debate, they will uh relinquish the position for that section of the meeting. So basically, the parliamentarian is there to serve the officers and the membership with uh relevant uh uh rules. So that's the end of the Section A of duties of officers. And I think that might be a good time to stop, Mark, and ask if there are any questions or amendments before we go on.
Yeah, any, well, first of all, are there any amendments to uh this section? And I don't see any or hear any.
I just, I just added a comma that was missing.
Okay.
That's editorial, didn't require. I just couldn't stand it, sorry.
Okay.
I, I, I have a comment, um, I, I have a comment about uh this from, from my perspective, maybe, maybe the officer perspective. But the parliamentarian has been such a nice addition to, I believe, to the NCAC. I, um, Michael and Nancy just do um, just do a fabulous job in, in this regard. And I can tell you uh, any of the officers when we're, when we're dealing with whatever we might be dealing with in, in a meeting, it's really nice to have a parliamentarian, um, and they're just great at it. So I, that's, that's been a really wonderful addition, I think. So that's just a comment.
Thank you.
Okay, I think uh on to Section B, Nancy.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Section B. Okay, thank you. So Section B. Well, it looks like, okay, so the big one is that we've changed the election of officers to the April membership meeting instead of the current June meeting. And this will allow the new board to plan for the upcoming year. There's no change in term dates, the new officers will still take over July one, beginning of the fiscal year. But it gives them a couple of months to plan the budget for the next year along with the remaining officers. So they're actually almost like two boards, in effect, the board, the current board that continues doing business for the rest of the year and the board elect that's planning for the next year. And then it changes the communication of the so today's bylaws have a nominations committee that comes up with a slate of candidates for office. And they had to produce that slate by seven days before the election meeting. And what we're changing it to is an outreach task force, which we'll talk about in Article seven. And that will come up with a list of candidates, but not a slate at least fourteen days before the election meeting. And then the election itself adds that a voice vote may be held if only one candidate is there for office. You don't need to actually do a different, I mean, a more formal vote. And that's the only change in there. So otherwise, the bylaws stay the same. Would you like me to read the whole thing or are we okay to just talk about those changes? Sounds like we're okay. So I think we had a comment here from Guy.
Yeah, yeah, there's a comment from Guy. Guy, do you want to speak to that?
Uh, sure. My question, and I I actually talked to Nancy about this before was should one of the officers have the duty to monitor the various agencies, special districts, whatever, if in terms of their work and their regulations and changes in either one that might impact our community.
Yeah, and and I I took your comment, Guy, and and we discussed it at our last bylaws committee meeting and with, I I was gonna bring it up at our executive board meeting coming up next week to, or a couple of weeks also. But maybe that would be a really great task force to have that would be reporting to the executive board. So it's a, it's a terrific idea, I think. At this point, I don't think it's actually in any of the officer positions, is it?
No.
Sort of implied by the secretary, uh, reporting by county actions.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a broader, as I suggested, there's, you know, somebody who can come to the C A C at its regular meetings, talk if there are issues in the sanitation district, water district, fire district, O D O. But the U S official wildlife, any changes, things that are going on and any of them to be able to report to that. So that was my point and and Nancy, you know how I feel about task, permanent task forces, so I won't get into that even, but so yeah, no, I, it's something if you all are gonna talk about it and make sure that it happens and I I I don't think the how it happens makes a difference as long as it does.
Okay, so at this point, you don't feel like you need to make an amendment, but just rest assured, we are not losing sight of that suggestion.
You know, it seems to me that there are a number of possible new tasks that may arise. And perhaps those are more appropriate in the policies and procedures document.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the term of office did not change. We added a new section D called removal from office, and Robert's Rules of Order just suggests that you have such a section. Hopefully, we will never need it, but should an executive board member need to be removed, we have this this new section. So any executive board member may be removed from office with or without cause by a two-thirds vote of the membership attending a a membership meeting. A fourteen day notice of the proposed action may, shall be given. County council liked this one. Vacancies. Let's see, I think there's no change on vacancies. Well, yes, there is, because we, that would be up to the outreach task force. So vacancies shall be filled by a vote of the membership at the next regular membership meeting to complete the unexpired term of the officer being replaced, that part's the same. Pursuant to outreach task force procedures described in Article seven. And that's it for Article four.
All right, any, any amendments to any part of Article four? Don't, don't see any, Nancy.
Thank you. We're on to Article five. So these are the big ones, these thank you all for hanging in. So under Article five in the general section, we've added that associated documents will be made available per a public Oregon Public Meeting Law. And then, of course, these N C A C bylaws and the and the policies and procedures. We've changed, we kind of updated for the, you know, the times, all meetings should be held either solely via electronic meeting like this, via video conferencing or hybrid, electronic and in person as determined by the N C A C chairperson or the executive board or the subcommittee chairperson as appropriate. If a hybrid meeting is held, they need to provide real-time discussion among members of attending electronically and in person. So that's a little bit new. And under meeting description, Section A, we've added that regular membership meeting dates can be changed by the executive board with at least fourteen days notice. Currently, there's no way to change the date of an, of a, of a regular membership meeting. And we've also moved the meeting times to policies and procedures because that's what's recommended in Robert's rules, it's currently there in the bylaws. We've changed the election of officers, the April general meeting, like we talked about before. We've removed the requirement to post membership meeting notices in three prominent physical locations. And we've simplified the meeting notice wording. So currently, poor Jeff has been physically posting meeting notices in various locations. We do plan to talk in the policies and procedures section about what we might do instead, like post an annual notice, post in, you know, possibly in the N C A newsletter, that kind of thing to be able to promote, but we're, we will be, as we're talking about in Article seven, proposing an outreach task force to do membership outreach. So we're, we're definitely going to cover that. And then we've also clarified the way for members to request agenda items be added to the agenda. Under Article A, meeting descriptions. I guess that's what I, we have three different types of membership meetings. So we have for general meetings, we have so we have three different types of meetings, membership meetings, executive board meetings and subcommittee meetings. There are also outreach or test force meetings, but those aren't covered in the bylaws per se. So within membership meetings, we have three different, we have three different times, we have regular membership meetings, have special membership meetings, and we have urgent membership meetings. Under the regular membership meetings, we've I guess I just went through that. Under special membership meetings, we're saying that that the current bylaws state have kind of combined special and urgent. We've separated them out to clarify. So a special membership meeting, this meeting is one that this falls into, it's one that's not urgent, but it has, we want to spend a little more time on one particular important topic. And so the N C A C chairperson may call additional membership meetings due to special circumstances or to cover one or more topics in more detail. So tsunami evacuation plans might be another, another one. Notice shall be the same as for regular membership meetings. Only business mentioned in the notice of the special meeting can be transacted in that meeting. And then urgent membership meetings are, can be called to discuss a time sensitive or critical situation or issue as determined by the N C A C chairperson. Every effort shall be made to provide as much notice as possible, but a minimum twenty-four hour notice shall be issued through the N C A C email system. And the link for the electronic meeting should be posted on the N C A C website and via email at least twenty-four hours prior to a meeting. Hopefully, we'll not ever have to have an urgent membership meeting, but it's allowed in the bylaws should something like that come up. And we did have quite a bit of discussion about my, what might constitute an urgent membership meeting. So moving on to executive board meetings, this is all from Article six, which will cover where we have the new executive board. And again, there can be regular, special and urgent executive board meetings. So the executive board is going to be open to the membership. They meet once a month and a minimum of fourteen days prior to the membership meetings unless or otherwise ordered by the executive board. So they have some flexibility. No, no later than the first month of the fiscal year, the executive board should schedule the day and week for the monthly executive board meetings. And the notice is in there of seven days. And special executive board meetings would be if they want to talk about something in more detail as well. And urgent would be to discuss a time sensitive or critical situation. So that's it for executive board meetings. And then on for subcommittee meetings, standing and ad hoc, so standing subcommittee is one that's always there like bylaws. Ad hoc subcommittees are formed for a special purpose. So like the community plan, subcommittee is an ad hoc subcommittee because it will end when their, their process is done. They'll meet as they deem necessary, either electronically or hybrid. Meeting notices shall be posted at least seven days in advance the meeting date on the N C A C website and distributed to the N C A C membership email list, all are public. Okay, section, are there any questions about Section A with all these different meeting types? Okay, we'll go into quorum. So we made some changes to quorum, the current quorum is eight for a general membership meeting. Robert's Rules of Orders suggests fifteen for a member, membership our size. And particularly since things have gone on Zoom, we've done a scan to make sure that we, we have that many in a meeting. What a quorum means is that it's the minimum number of of members present to be able to do any kind of business, to vote on anything. So fifteen for regular membership meetings. For executive board or standing or ad hoc subcommittee meetings, it, the quorum is a majority of the members present of the members of that exec, of that body. Motions, so the changes in motions. We clarified the member rights and limits for making motions in the meeting and the dispensation of motions. But really, nothing, nothing major there. Section D, conflict of interest. There was extensive work done on conflict of interest prior to these bylaws. And we didn't do a lot of changing on that. It's, we added a declaration of subcommittee members requirement at subcommittee member, at subcommittee meetings. So we all talk about conflict of interest. The definition is again, we had a number of lawyers working on this and we do have more of a definition of conflict of interest in Article ten as well. So we do plan in the policies and procedures to put more information in about conflict of interest, because while you can write conflict of interest fairly tightly, the meaning and training for it is fairly extensive. So there's quite a bit on, under Oregon League of Cities and Oregon Public Meeting Law, kinds of things on what constitutes conflict of interest. So it's kind of interesting, I kind of was interested in that. All declarations and discussions of a conflict perceived are realistically part, made part of the record by the secretary. Section E is voting. We've increased the vote to approve the bylaw amendment to two-thirds majority. So today will be one, simple majority, but in the future, there'll be a two-thirds majority as, as suggested by Robert's Rules of Order. We've clarified how voting will be done and how they'll, how they're recorded. How votes are recorded, we've specified procedures for roll call voting. So roll call voting is something that should somebody want to hear how everybody votes, they can make a motion for a roll call vote. At that point, the motion requires a vote of the membership. If it's approved, then the chair will actually call each member by name that's in the meeting and ask for their vote to be given verbally. So when we do Zoom votes, we, we can have a recording of the votes, but this is another way to do it. Just because somebody wants a roll call vote doesn't mean it will automatically happen, it's a motion that has to be approved. And then each declaration shall be recorded, made part of a permanent, part of the, the record. Member must be present to vote, proxy voting is pro, is prohibited. That's not a change to the bylaws, it's clarification, however. The secretary should make a permanent vote of the summary outcome of any vote. Votes in the executive board, subcommittee members can be decided by either consensus or by a majority of the members of that body. All other voting members roles apply. And we've also clarified minority positions. When minority positions shall be included in the record and in any N C A C report. Members may also submit to the N C A C their minority positions in writing within one week after the meeting at which a vote has been taken. One or more representatives of minority positions may be designated in the meeting to write a minority report. So there, there are various ways to handle that. We're also also going to put more information in the policies and procedures about, about that. When a report to another agency or entity is due in a period shorter than one week, the time for inclusion of the minority submission is the day before that due date. Because Sarah has told us sometimes those deadlines can be really tight. So I think, is there something in the chat? Oh, okay, there's some questions here.
Yeah, from Guy, Guy. Let me just read that one or you wanna? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
I just had a question. I'm not sure about the, you know, how to propose this or if it's worth discussing, but I noticed in the Pacific City C A C bylaws, they have, they report the results of votes along with the recommendation that goes to that county. And I was wondering if we could put something similar or discuss putting something similar in our bylaws. Something, for example, that would say, you know, out of the number of members eligible to vote, this is how many were at the meeting and this was the number that were, you know, A, nay, abstained. Just to kind of give a better picture as to the recommendations, as to how, what the level of participation was.
Yeah, so basically, I think we have that under secretary shall make a permanent record of the summary outcome of any vote. But you're saying you'd like that in the report that goes to the county, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yeah. I'm listening like how many were eligible, so if we have like a thousand people that are eligible to vote and twenty people come to a Saturday morning meeting and vote to make a recommendation on behalf of N A S C O, and it would be nice that those numbers are noted so that it's kind of reflective of the participation.
I'm not sure we know how many people are eligible.
Right.
Right, well, I think we have a general idea just from the number of properties in the boundary, it's, you know, well over a thousand probably. So I think that that's, I think we probably should know the general number of people eligible to participate.
Typically, what, what Robert's rules will say is that you, you would report the number of votes compared to the number of people in the meeting. But do you want to make an amendment to that, Hillary, or should we talk about that when we get to the policies and procedures and go into more detail?
I don't know, I guess, I guess my question is what I think in the C A C bylaws, it kind of seems to fit in this section with the voting census one, this section mentions, you know, the secretary would make a permanent record, so I think it kind of kind of like go kind of naturally could substitute that or 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 build on that. So yeah, I don't know if I should make a motion or to just, can we, is, can we discuss it without, I don't know the rules.
No, you'd need to make a motion to amend. But I could say that if you, if you don't want to do that, we could certainly take this up next year on policies and procedures and possibly do another bylaws amendment, because what I what I envision is that as we're working on policies and procedures is that we will also have some related bylaws amendments that will come through. So it's up to you on whether you'd like to make an amendment now. Um, and, uh, or whether you'd like to wait.
Yeah, I I'm happy to make an amendment, I guess propose an amendment. Um, and we can't, there, just to reiterate, I really support the inclusiveness of letting people vote outside of the meetings, but I think you've said that there's no way that will be allowed to happen. Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, we've, we had extensive discussions about that as well. Um, county council felt very strongly about it. Robert's rules is extremely strong. And there's reasons for it. Um, the reason for not allowing voting outside the meeting is that as you're seeing today, there's discussion in the meeting. And it's important for the people who are voting to be able to hear and participate in that discussion. So if there were proxy voting or voting outside the meeting, there could be votes where the person would have changed their mind had they been able to be there to hear the discussion. So that's the main reason.
All right. Thank you. I put the amendment proposal in the chat.
Okay, so.
Hillary, I'm.
Go ahead.
I I might add that Hillary, in in there are cases where we NCAC may want to do a poll uh, for one issue or another. Uh, in which case, um, they could certainly choose to do outside polling, proxy polling or whatever. In other words, it could be by mail or something else, but uh, but during a debate and discussion to have, uh, uh, outside voting is is, um, is pretty problematic.
Yeah, I know. You know, we can vote for the president by mail, so it's hard to not be able to vote for NCAC recommendations. Um, you know, like outside of a Saturday morning, it just really limits just since not everybody can come to a Saturday morning meeting.
Yeah, well, except that, uh, that's true, but you know, during during any particular meeting, if there's an issue, uh, then as you as Nancy notes that in today's meeting, there's a lot of points, uh, uh, issues, um, perspectives, uh, nuances that are raised that anybody who's on the line or just a little bit close to the line might change their feeling about it and so on. Um, don't have access to that if they're not here.
Right. And I would just to to counter that, I would say, well, then you just come back with the the next version until you have a version that people can you know, see the final version and then that's what's voted on like yea or nay.
So I I suggest we deal with your amendment, Hillary, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
So Hillary's amendment is, um, under the the voting, um. So under Article looks like you've put this in, Tom, um.
I I put the, uh, I copied from the, uh.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, this it would likely go right here.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So Hillary's.
It's just I just record the poll correctly. It's Article Five. We're on Article Five.
It's Article Five, Section E.
Okay.
So Mark, do you want to ask if there's a second?
Yes. Uh, Hillary's proposed an amendment, uh, it's on the screen. Is there a second?
I'd like to second that. This is Roger. I'd like to second it.
Okay, thanks, Roger. Okay, I'll, uh, I'll I'll read it. It's on the screen, but I'll go ahead and read it to restate it. The results of any vote making a recommendation or plan on behalf of the Nescun community forwarded to the Tillamook County Planning Commission or to other interested parties will clearly identify the number of members eligible to vote. Uh, she has one thousand plus. The number in attendance at the meeting and the number of registered voters, members voting, I yea, nay, or abstaining and attaching a minority opinion if those voting in the minority provide one within fourteen days from date of vote. You've spoken to it, Hillary, but is there, do you want to make another comment?
Um, be before we get, I I want to call this, cause, cause what is this replacing? But like, like I need to record, um, in the motion or in in the poll. So Tom, Tom, can you bring back the like and maybe? Show us.
Two, three, four. I believe it should go as an append be appended to, uh, paragraph four, section E.
So I see, I see two, two areas. Actually, there are two things in here. One is about the recording of the vote and the other is about minority opinions. So they're in two spots and I'm wondering if we need to break your motion into two, Hillary.
Yes, I I see that as well now. And I think, uh, the current wording about the minority report, I think the timing. I think I'm good. If you just have fourteen days, unless the deadline is sooner, I think right now you have like a week unless or the deadline is sooner, I think a little time is fine.
And the and the current bylaws had stated, I think it was two or forty-eight hours or something. And so we did have some discussion on that, on whether it should be uh, how long and we ended up, it went from three and then five, and then we thought, well, let's just give it a week. So we felt like that should be plenty of of time to be able to submit. So is it okay with you if we take that part out?
Yes.
So.
Okay.
Am I correct in saying this can be deleted?
Yes, thank you.
We know where. Tom, did you have a motion to amend the amendment?
Uh, somebody, I don't know if the comment was, uh, Tom Perhodish had a, uh, comment ahead of me.
No, it you, the chat, the chat says you have an amendment to amend it.
Right. And and the chat also says Tom Perhodish has a comment, but.
Yeah.
The, if that comment is invader or opposed, it should wait, right?
Oh, that's correct. Uh, uh, the amendment, the amendment has priority here.
Okay, so I would, uh, like to delete uh, the number of eligible voters because we don't really have a good handle on that, uh, and no way of knowing that. So I would propose to delete that phrase that's highlighted.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
That's a motion.
Seconded.
That can, okay. It's been seconded and Tom, anything else you want to say about that?
Uh, no, just other than we can't, okay, we can't know that.
Okay. Uh, comments, oh, go ahead, Michael.
I'm going to ask that, Tom, you're you're good at this. I'm going to ask that you clarify that sentence. Um, so that we know exactly what it is you're rewriting or amending.
Okay, so if I'm in.
I think you're gonna leave identify in, right, Tom?
Here.
I think you're gonna leave identifying.
Uh, I didn't understand that.
I I don't think you want to delete the word identify.
Oh, identify, you're right.
Yeah.
We're getting very informal here, but.
Yes. Sorry. Is that what you meant?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I got a little enthusiastic with the delete key.
Okay, so so Tom has, Tom has a, Tom has put a a motion on the floor to, uh, make an amendment to an amendment. And, uh, his is, uh, I'll just state it, I, well, it's it's on the screen, but you've taken out, you've basically taken out the number of members eligible to vote, which is in in parentheses, one thousand plus. So that's, that's what, that's what your, uh, that's what your motion is, Tom.
That is correct.
And, um, okay, on on that amendment, Tom, did you want to say anything else before we open it for discussion? Okay. So on that, on that amendment, is there any discussion from, uh, from the members today?
Was that seconded?
Oh, I'm sorry, was it?
Yeah, it was seconded.
I will.
I thought Jeff did, yeah.
And several people did.
Yeah, okay.
Pick one.
Okay, so now, let's see, I have, I'm looking in the chat here. Is there, uh?
So if first person was Tom Perhodish followed by.
Okay. Okay.
Tom, Tom may not be commenting on Tom's amendment, so.
Um, yeah, I am actually.
Okay.
You are, okay.
Well, that, that wasn't my original comment, but okay, do I understand that if we accept Tom's amendment that it becomes part of the the amendment to the amendment that it replaces or not replaces, but adds to the language as to what the secretary should do with votes?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I I I think it would be better in policies and procedures, but if, you know, we did, we do dis- we do discuss a minority opinion and uh, two things about Hillary's motion that this is an amendment to. I I do agree that it's impossible to identify the eligible voters, but the county certainly knows as as we know that there are many, many more by a factor of ten or twenty that are eligible to vote that don't attend these meetings. So I don't know that it's telling anybody anything they don't know. Uh, the fourteen days as opposed to the seven days. We got to the, I was the one that suggested three business days, then it became five business days. And it, what I remember is that Sarah said, well, don't make it much longer than that because you may have a short views on when the county needs to get the recommendations. So we finally settled on a week. Uh, which I think, given her comment is is reasonable. And I actually like that that minority opinion section because I think it, if anybody feels like they're being overwhelmed by the majority, they have the opportunity to make a minority report and the county has made it very, very clear that it's more interested in the rationale for people's positions than it is interested in votes. And so they're going to be looking at minority opinions and majority votes and, um, to the extent that they, we make recommendations, uh, they'll make decisions based more, I think, on the the reasoning than on the, uh, votes itself, but.
Uh, yes. So let me just clarify that Hillary has removed the part about the minority vote
Okay.
From her, her motion to amend. Um, so she's letting what we proposed stand on that.
It wasn't, and then, and then. It wasn't clear to me that from the discussions, that wasn't going to become enough, another amendment, so if if it's deleted and it's out, okay. Um, but if it's, if it's going to be another amendment, uh, because as as you, as you posed the question, you said there are really two things here and one of them needs to come out, but if it's, it's deleted for all time, then okay.
Yeah, no, I I think Hillary's saying seven days is good, so thank you. Uh, and then I do want to clarify your first part. Um, basically, if Tom's amendment to the amendment is, uh, approved, then Hillary's amendment becomes what's on the screen with the part of it, uh, voted out, and then we will vote on Hillary's amendment on whether, whether people want to have that amendment to add this information to the bylaws. Does that make sense? Okay.
And Hillary, you have a, just a comment, uh?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, two things. One, I wanted to reiterate that this is in the Pacific City. Version of this is in the Pacific City bylaws already. Um, it just doesn't include the total number of members eligible. But do we honestly not have a way to to know the num, like the general? I know we don't know how many homes have been maybe multi owners, but we know how many dwellings are in the community boundary, and then we have to have a general idea of how many members are eligible to be part of the NCAC.
So we know that there are about eight hundred properties. Some are built and some are not, but we don't know how many members there could be in each property. You could have renters, you could have property owners. Um, you could have up to four of each, you could have one. Uh, you could have one person that owns multiple properties. So it it is, there's just no way to know how many eligible members we have.
We have, I think it's safe to say there's at least a thousand. And so when you have, I think it's important to show the the per- that perspective. When you have at least a thousand people eligible to show up on a Saturday morning and discuss and vote, and not that many people do, I think that's an important factor to consider when a commissioners are looking at something and saying, oh, wow, like that is how many people feel this way.
Yeah.
If I can respond to that, uh, Tom.
I think Tom, I think Wyatt's in the chat as wanting to speak to it.
Uh, yeah, the the number of eligible members will change on any given day with a registration of a deed, which we don't have the ability to monitor.
But the number of properties, uh, is pretty steady, so.
Yeah, but, uh.
I'm not.
Ownership of the properties is what's critical to membership and the owner of a property could be one person one day and five people the next.
Right. And I'm not trying to identify like with a bullseye target, like an exact number here, but I think it's a helpful generalization. We know that there are nine hundred some dwellings in the, you know, Nescun community boundary, and we've just expanded it further and that the dwelling number doesn't include properties that are not developed, and those people are also eligible members as well. So I don't know why there's pushback on kind of trying to generalize how many people are eligible to be part of this organization.
Okay. Uh, Jeff, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, and, um, so, so, so I think I just want to really just kind of back up what what Tom and Wyatt are saying. I don't think it makes any sense whatsoever that we're going to make an official report to the county and say there's about a thousand people that could have shown up to this meeting but didn't. Like, that, that's, yeah, like, they know how many people live in Nescun better than we do. So, so I I I think that 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 is, that that is implicitly saying our meeting is not that important because all those, these people didn't show up. Like, I I don't support saying something like that at all. Yeah.
Okay, uh, Tom? Uh, you have a comment?
Yes, just in terms of, uh, the mechanics of a set of bylaws. Bylaws are meant to be specific and actionable. Uh, things which are in the details and things which are not necessarily very well definable belong in a different document of policies and procedures, uh. I think not being able to have access to those numbers exactly kind of defeats the idea that this is an document that we follow exactly. Done.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, Guy, you have a comment?
Well, I I think if we, uh, I'm supporting Tom's amendment that, uh, in order to be eligible to vote, uh, you have to be present. So when we talk about the number of eligible voters, it's those who attend the meeting, not those who are out in the community or within our boundary. Uh, we'd have to change our definition of eligible voters. And, uh, and then I've got me thinking that, you know, I don't know what about half people vote for President of the United States. We might have to start discrediting that too. But that that's a side comment. Uh, so I don't think he can put much weight on who doesn't show up and vote. Uh, it's those who vote. I also have just an another general comment about, uh, uh, and actually who is attending and who is eligible to vote, uh, and maybe the parliamentarian can, uh, uh, do something with this and when you get to policies or procedures. Uh, at the beginning of each meeting, does the chair, the meeting declare that a quorum is present? And how do they, how does the chair know that? Uh, and, uh, so everybody knows right from the start that it's, uh, it it's an official meeting, um, where votes are actions, uh, taken and, uh, and there's, and I am, I I've been part of some meetings where the chair has declared uh, a quorum is present and there wasn't, uh, and no one called for a kind of a a vote of or a kind of a determination by person by person, uh, if they were actually an eligible voter. Uh, but just by the declaration of the chair, it became a, it was a quorum. So I don't know how the parliamentarian sees that, but it's something in the procedures that maybe we should do at the start of every meeting.
Typically, Guy, I think your point is very, very well taken. Uh, it 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 ought to be announced at the beginning of each meeting that a, that a, a quorum exists. Um, not necessarily a number, but at least the quorum exists.
Right.
Uh, if there.
Uh, if there is a quorum uh stated to be existing. Uh, and there is not one, that's fraud. Uh, and uh, unless it's a obviously a mistake. Uh, but uh, it it's it's customary and to announce a quorum and announce the number of people uh available or or present. Secondly. Uh, and equally important is that when we have fewer than a quorum, it uh, it should be noted immediately. Uh, because any action after that is moot. Uh, we can, we can continue a meeting and have discussion only. But we cannot have any votes or any action items after a quorum disappears.
So I I think we need to get back to the.
Yeah, let me.
Motion at hand here.
So let me, let me get back to, I I I see Roger has a, would like to comment.
Yeah, I'd like to support Hillary's uh motion because. I think today's meeting is a perfect example. We know that with over. A thousand people eligible, we've only got thirty people today voting on bylaws, which is probably the most, one of the most important things. That the NCAC uh can address. Uh, I think it's very important that the county knows what percentage of the actual. Eligible voters are are involved in making a decision that's going to affect everybody.
Thank you, Roger. Uh, Hillary, you have a comment? I don't know, it's in the chat, if you wanted to uh expand on that at all. I can read it.
No, I'm good. You can go ahead, pass along.
You're 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 good, okay. All right. Um. Let's see, Barbara Gordon? If you'd like to speak to your comment?
No, that's okay. I.
Okay.
I think it's kind of been said by other people too. But you can read my comment.
Okay, I'll read it. I think it's important for the county to have reminders that when they are implementing changes. They aren't getting data from the majority of the citizens. But rather from a small vocal minority. Uh, Carlos. Monreal, Monreal? If you'd like to comment on your, you have some a comment in the chat, would you like to read that?
Uh, I would. Um, I understand the uh. I understand the position of trying to set up a demographic to the county so they can get an idea. However, it seems that um, the people that are interested in participating, that want to be a part of the group. And maybe that should be our our sample uh and that. And uh, membership should renew every year because if somebody sells and they don't fall off the rolls. Then, like you say, you've got over a thousand people and only thirty are present, so. That seems like it'd be more reasonable. If you are interested in participating. Register from there. If you can make the meeting, great. If not, well, then. Yeah, you accept the recommendations of those who are able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Helene Koch? Would you like, I don't know if you want to comment on yours, read yours?
I don't need to read it. I'm just commenting that if somebody wants to attend a meeting, it's their choice to attend the meeting.
Okay.
It's a, make it a priority. That's all.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you. Uh, Michael?
Yes, um, yeah, if the county wants to know um. How many people are eligible, that's their business. They can ask us. Perhaps there is a need uh elsewhere and otherwise for the organization to send an annual report after registration on the demographics of our organization. Uh, but in terms of uh any particular vote. Uh, in a democratic society and system, it's those people who show up or actually take the action. They're the ones. Uh, there's no other option possible uh otherwise.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, what we have uh at this point on the floor is. Uh. Well, we have one more comment. Barbara Gordon, would you like to? Speak or you? I can read that.
Well, you know, it that just kind of struck a nerve when I heard the gentleman say. About the. Maybe people need to actually join this organization. Because if it's open, if. The proposed bylaw change goes through and it's. And now membership is open to. Everyone within the watershed as well. Excuse me. Not all those people think they have anything to do with NCAC, and how do we identify those people to let them know that there's meetings going on? If they're, if they haven't had an actual. Members cho- choice to become a member of the organization. So. Identifying more clearly who are members of the NCAC. And. Then extrapolating, this is the voting population of the NCAC. Out of a total population of this, I think that gives the county a better idea of who's actually speaking on behalf. Of this particular little area. I am on the planning commission for my little town. And I know that sometimes we get busy and we don't quite remember. There's everybody that we need to be considering. And so instead of just listening to the vocal few, we have a. By this amendment of Hillary's going through, we'll have a better. Memory or. Reminder that there are a lot of people. Not speaking about anything, but that haven't voiced an opinion. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tom, I see you have a comment.
Actually, Susan has one first.
Oh. Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm sorry, Susan.
I was to the um, what the previous person just said. Um, that will be the role of the new outreach task force to raise awareness of the NCAC and.
Yeah.
And to let people know about the ability to participate. And that's in these newly revised bylaws.
Now, Tom, I don't know if you want to comment? No, I I I. Okay. I I'll just say, the the counting, Sarah Abscher and the planning department know our numbers. Community Development Department know our numbers better than we do. I mean, she's actually. In coming up with the. Four instead of two. That uh, voting category, she actually went through and looked at uh a sample of, if not all. Of the family trust and LLCs and. And so uh, you know, it could be anywhere from. Nine hundred, a thousand to three thousand. And uh, but they know, if if thirty of us vote in favor of something and ten people vote in opposition to it. They know that there are a lot more people out there that could have participated that didn't for whatever reason. That's my only point.
Thanks, Tom. And Randall, you've got a comment in the chat?
Yeah, I just want to point out, and it could be done again, that uh about four or five years ago, we sent. The county helped us uh send out postcards to. Every property owner. Uh, in the area, including Slab Creek and Ortown and those areas. We've got seven hundred forty people who signed up to include their email in our emailing list to get notices of the meet. Of the meetings that take place. So. Um, that could happen again, or that could happen like every two years. But when you're, you've. Seven hundred forty people are aware of the NCAC, signed up. And get the emails and the notices as to who shows up and who. Uh, participates, that's definitely the individual choice. But it's not like no one knows this is going on and it's a secret uh society or something. All these people know this and they can choose to participate. But that could be redone, that could be done every couple of years. That would give you a. A good idea and you would know what the outreach has been. Because it's pretty significant outreach for a unincorporated community of our size. I'll leave it at that.
There is.
Thank you, Randall.
There is a motion to cease debate.
Yeah.
And that uh is not debatable and it requires a simple majority.
So. Just, are are we going to do polls on on the polls, on the polls? Because we're three, we're three deep now, so I want to just be. Um, can we do a set, something like that, like?
I. So. So Nancy's called the question on Tom's amendment.
Right, but that has to be.
And. And and so at at this point, I think we're ready to do a vote.
But I think, I think, I think the. Michael, tell me if I'm correct. We have to vote on ending debate.
That's correct. You have.
Okay.
Ending debate.
Can we do that vote just by by a set? Like, is anyone?
Must be done now.
If if we.
Do we have to do a poll or can we do a?
Yeah.
Uh. If it looks like there aren't any more comments in the chat.
Move on.
I I can withdraw my motion and we can just go to a vote on Tom's motion.
Without objection.
Okay, without objection, we'll we'll move to a vote on Tom's amendment.
Yes.
Which is, which is in the blue in front of you.
Okay, um, I'm gonna need some help from Tom and Nancy to write this correctly in the poll.
So in the poll, Jeff, it should be that. Um, where the motion is to. Delete. The the words, the number of members eligible to vote parentheses one to thousand plus and parentheses. From Hillary's motion to amend. So if we're voting in favor, we're voting to remove that phrase.
So. Slow down, but let's see, what what is the the? Just the title of what we're doing here, given that we're we're.
The title is.
Parliamentary pretzel and I just want to make sure we.
The title is.
I'm kind of confused and probably that means other people are much more confused now.
The the title is. We're voting on the amendment to Hillary's amendment.
Okay.
To vote, uh, to uh, record votes.
And. Motion to, did we just say motion to Hillary's amendment?
No.
Amendment to amend Hillary's amendment.
Okay.
And then after we vote on this. We should go unless there's further discussion on Hillary's amendment.
Right.
We should go to a vote on Hillary's amendment.
Correct.
Right, and and.
And it will either be written.
With it.
If it, if this succeeds.
Without this.
Then it will be written without the blue part. That we will, um, and if it doesn't succeed, then. This information. Will remain. So when you go to a vote, if you vote in favor, it's to remove the blue language. If you vote against, it's to. Keep it in.
The text I'm writing is motion to amend Hillary's mo- motion. To remove the text, the number of members to eligible to vote, one thousand plus.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yay, Jeff.
So you can say, uh, under the the voting party, you could say. Uh, mo- vote in favor of Tom's amendment. Or.
Right.
Vote. Against Tom's amendment to really clarify it. Or abstain. Thank you all for hanging in there. We're. We're. Still have quite a bit to go, so.
Um, all right, I'm saving this. Hopefully, I did it right. Okay, if I didn't do it right, we'll just do another one. Okay. Does that look right?
Yep.
Yes.
That looks great.
Thanks, Jeff.
We were twenty-six out of twenty-eight, so if anyone is having trouble voting twenty-seven. Um, and wants us to wait a minute, please put it in the chat. Okay, I'm gonna end the poll unless someone asks us to hold it on for a second while they find their vote or something. Okay, ending the poll. And 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 I am in favor of Tom's amendment, so so we'll add one. Okay, sharing the results. So um, with my vote, it is twenty-five out of twenty-eight in favor. And three out of twenty-eight against.
All right, so Tom's amendment. To Hillary's amendment has passed. And uh, that. Language will be removed from Hillary's. Um, amendment. And now we will vote on Hillary's amendment.
Well, first we needed it. There may be more discussion.
That's right.
Okay. Well, yeah. If there's more discussion. So that's the amendment that we have in front of us now. And uh. This point, it, this is open for discussion.
Uh, I'd like to comment. I don't. Think this is necessary, but I don't.
Jeff, Tom, Jeff is first in the chat.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
And and I'm just gonna, like, this kind of thing belongs in the policies and procedures. Like, this is, this is. Like, I like, I don't, I don't think we should be putting this in the in the bylaws where it's hard to change and and adjust, so. Like, I don't necessarily disagree with the the sentiment of recording more information, but I think we should just put it in the policy and procedures.
Okay. Tom, you. You've got a comment, but maybe you want to add to it?
I I've, just what Jeff said, he stole my time here.
Okay. Uh, Hillary? I'm sorry, wait, I guess Roger, Roger, and then Hillary. Roger?
It it just occurred to me, do the new members in the new watershed boundary. Do they even know that this meeting is occurring today? And do they even know that they are members at this point in time?
They're not. They're not members.
It's.
They're not. Okay, that's a good point.
Not not until we're done here.
Yeah.
And and let's just clarify again that. There aren't that many people that are in the new definition. That weren't. In the previous definition. It was just a clarification of the membership boundaries, not so much a. Expansion.
Okay, Hillary's got a question.
Yeah, I just, could you clarify, is the the um, policy and procedure section part of the bylaws? Okay.
What it is, Hillary, is um, it's a separate document. It's one that would accompany the bylaws. Currently, they don't exist. We are going to be creating them during the rest of this year and into next year. And they have more specificity than the bylaws and they're more easily changed than the bylaws. So um, they can be changed at any membership meeting with notice. Uh, members still approve everything in the policies procedures, but they're, they're, they're not as um. They don't have to necessarily go to county council for every word and that kind of thing. So it's 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 like a policy manual kind of a thing that people would be using that's um, open to the members and um. And I think this kind of thing. I I really like the sentiment. I like this this motion. Um, but I'm I'm thinking. The policies and procedures would be a good place to put it if if you feel comfortable with that.
Um, I actually. I haven't, since that document doesn't exist yet, I'm not comfortable with that. Um, it's in the Pacific Cities CAC bylaws, and that's where I got it from. So in the interest of transparency, I don't see any harm in including. The facts, which are the number of people voting. Yay or nay um, on something when passing along recommendations or a plan to the county. So I still would like to see this in the bylaws in this uh, section E.
Um, if I can, if I can tune in on.
Let's, Michael, let. Go ahead. Let me, let me go down the list here. So that was Hillary. We've got Tom. And Tom, if I can just, Tom. It has what what Jeff said about, I think, putting it in the P and P. Um. And then Jeff, I I guess you have another comment?
Sure, um, really quickly, and Nancy already said this. The 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 NCAC area has not changed. Like, so we should assume that everyone who. Is currently eligible to be an NCAC member is eligible under the new bylaws and that no one new is added because the old geographical area was defined. In a very vague way, and the new area, which is the watershed. Is a much better definition, but it does not really change who who, if if you look on a map, who's eligible, it's the same, it's the same areas. So. We're we're not adding more people by 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 this new change in the definition. Like, I I don't think we had anybody, like, like, it's all, it's all the same spots on the map.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Uh, Michael?
Yeah, uh, the the whole issue of um, minority majority report, we discussed and we are of a mind that such a document or such a. and we are of a mind that such a document or such a decision is um uh uh is really a good one. Uh and uh in in my estimate, it really does belong in policies and procedures. Um and by the way, policies and procedures as a document will come right back to this body for approval and ratification and also be um afforded the opportunity to amend and discuss and debate. So um but as Nancy said, this is an important distinction, um the the bylaws are a structure and limitations. Policies and procedures are the distinct uh particulars about how we go about doing that. Each particular could be changed on a on a regular basis, the bylaws cannot. Uh they need to go through an entire process in order to be changed, so there's a real distinction there. Uh and again, I want to underscore, your concern is a good concern and we have taken it up and we do agree with it. But it needs to go into policies and procedures.
Okay, Tom, you have a comment?
Uh yes, I just wanted to mention that we do have a draft of the P and P and as soon as I find it, I will post a uh pointer to it in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Uh what we have in front of us is Hillary's motion, which which has been changed from her original motion. And I think uh okay, Jeff, you had another comment?
So I I just wanted like.
Okay.
To to the uh um sentiment that the P and Ps doesn't exist, so so that maybe we should just go ahead and put this in now. I would say with this bylaws committee, I have complete can faith, we're going to have a P and P. Like like the 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 job will get done, so.
Yeah, okay. And Tom put in the uh, it looks like you put in the maybe the P and P, Tom, I I'm, I didn't click on it.
That is correct.
Okay.
And it's very, very basic right now.
Yeah, okay.
We'll be taking that up after this meeting.
Okay.
That.
So at this point, I think unless there's other comments, I think we might be moving towards a vote on on Hillary's initial motion, which is on the screen.
One more short comment, Hillary, we count on you being there when we discuss these.
Well, I mean, that's kind of the point of one of the reasons I'm here today. I don't know if I'll be able to be at a future P and P meeting, whenever that might be. And some decisions are made and you can't participate if you're not at the meeting. That's one of the reasons why I think this is important. I think in the interest of transparency, I think the NCAC has made great strides this year. I think the bylaws committee is doing a great job with all of this new changes. But I think it's such an easy change to make to the bylaws right now that we don't have to wait for a P and P down the road or anything. It's in the Pacific City bylaws. It's a very simple thing to just include the numbers, the data, the facts. And so it's why I think it's important that we just include that in our bylaws, just like Pacific City.
Okay, thanks, Hillary. I don't see any other comments, so I believe we're ready for a vote on uh the motion that's on the screen.
So and um. But once again, I need some help. So so Tom, can you put that text in the chat for me to copy? Okay, and so this is Article Five, Section E, and it's gonna be appended after a particular paragraph, is that correct?
Yes.
Which paragraph?
One, two, three, fourth paragraph, where the uh here is.
Okay, so so it'll be appended to the end of paragraph four.
Correct.
Okay.
Did you agree, Hillary?
Yes, I think that that is the correct spot to put it. Thank you.
Once this is Denmark, um I would say that we're more than halfway through, uh because they we only have a couple more uh that are key. Um but I'm I'm suggesting we might want to take a a little uh break after five minutes or whatever.
Okay, okay, good idea, Nancy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, um I am going to launch this poll. Okay, and um please have a look and make sure I, like like Nancy, Tom, Hillary, make sure I I got this right and we can, we can always change it if uh if I if I if I did something wrong.
Looks good, Jeff.
Yes, that's correct, Jeff. Thank you so much.
Great. Okay, everyone has voted. And I'm going to vote against, so um that means that we have seven in favor out of twenty nine and twenty two against out of twenty nine.
Okay, so uh Hillary's motion after the vote uh uh did not pass. So uh uh will will not be added to that part of this section E.
So Hillary, I will say though that we're going to, the bylaws committee is gonna be taking this up. We're gonna be taking, doing some initial policies and procedures work before the June meeting and we will certainly discuss this uh amendment that you've proposed in our next bylaws committee meeting.
Thank you, Nancy.
And in fact, I'm putting it in the draft right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
So before we take a break, maybe we could just finish Article Five, because I think we're really close. Can you kind of scroll up? Let's see, I think uh I know Guy, you had something way back before we got to Hillary's emotion, uh but I think we kind of covered it about um about pro uh what was it, a quorum, and you're you're right, um we will have something in the policies and procedures about certifying a quorum at the beginning of the meeting, absolutely. Good point, um. I don't think there was anything else, we'd have to scroll way up in the chat to see if there's, was anything besides Hillary's, before Hillary's motion?
I I don't think so, I think they were, there were comments in in the the one that struck out is
Yeah, I think.
Guys was, guys was asking about a quorum.
Yeah, I think we're good, okay. So um I think we went out through the minority positions and then communications. Um we we moved a a survey to policies and procedures, there's a the current bylaws, uh periodic community survey. Policies and procedures, otherwise it's the same, or we've moved some things in communications to the, excuse me, the communications uh outreach, the outreach, no, excuse me, the communications task force responsibilities and these two remain. So uh to have email and NCAC website be the preferred methods of communication and all known meetings or hearings affecting the NCAC area shall be announced at regular, special or urgent meetings by email and on the NCAC website is appropriate, that's staying. And that's it for Article Five.
Okay, no other amendments or to any section of Article Five, right? Well, this one's done, and so why don't we? It's twelve twenty right now. Would a ten minute break be something that would uh, is that enough time for folks to come back at twelve thirty?
Yes.
Okay.
In minutes.
Okay. So ten minutes, twelve thirty, we'll be back, thank you.
And we're just gonna leave Zoom up, we're just, yeah, thank you. I think we can get through the rest of it pretty quickly.
Oh, I wish you hadn't said that.
You look like you just came in from a hike, Susan.
Maybe tomorrow. Or yesterday when it was gorgeous.
Yeah.
I liked summer yesterday.
Wasn't it awesome?
Yeah. Did any of you see the Aurora Borealis?
No.
Very much.
It was absolutely stunning up on Mary's Peak we went last night. It was just gorgeous. Unbelievable. Wow. I've never seen one.
So are we back in order?
Okay, let's uh. We'll go ahead and get going here. It's twelve thirty and I think we're on. Uh, I think we're on Article Six.
We are. So basically Article Six is brand new. It's the creation of an executive board. So everything about it is new. It has the composition is the elected and appointed NCAC officers. The immediate past chairperson for that first year and chairpersons of subcommittees and task forces. Uh, the parliamentarian is on as a non-voting member. And the Tillamook County Community Development Director shall serve in advisory committee capacity. So that's Sarah currently. Section B duties. It's to transact necessary business between meetings of the membership and such other businesses may be referred by the membership. Including planning agendas, discussing the work of officers and subcommittees. Prepared by prepare a budget for approval by the membership at the June annual meeting. Authorize the payment of membership bills within the limits of the budget adopted by the membership. For ratification of the membership at the next meeting. Recommend to the membership creation of subcommittees as are deemed necessary to promote the purposes and to carry on the work of the NCAC. Constitute task forces as needs arise with ratification at the next NCAC membership meeting. And appoint task force members as appropriate. So rather than being elected, task force members are appointed by the board. Present a report at meetings of the membership. Perform other duties as specifically assigned by other provisions of these bylaws. So the beauty of the executive board meetings is that under they're they're functional in. Any organization, but particularly in a body like ours that operates under Oregon Public Meeting Law. It's very difficult to get things done between membership meetings. And this allows Oregon Public Meeting Law to be supported because these meetings are videoed. They are. Documented, they are open to the members, but they allow. More casual meetings to talk about things in more detail and to plan for the bimonthly. Membership meetings. Actions, the. Executive Board shall take no actions that would conflict with the NCAC bylaws or action taken by the membership. The executive board may make recommendations to the membership for approval in regular membership meetings. So that's it for Article Six. And I guess information about meetings for executive board meetings are in Article Five that we've already gone through.
Thanks Nancy. I it looks like Wyatt has a. Question maybe?
Yeah, and this is this is unfortunately part of my training. The immediate past president's position raises a question in my mind. About some clarification which we might need as part of the. Of these bylaws or the policies and procedures, but if you have a past. If you have a presence that's been removed for cause, is that a past president?
I would say that that would be covered Wyatt. I mean, we could stick it in the policies and procedures, but. That that position is optional. If the current chair wants to have the past chair. Involved, then they can do that. If they don't, they don't need to have that chair position. So that's covered. That's covered under Article Four Duties of Officers. So.
Okay.
Yeah. So good, good thought though. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, any amendments to this section or this article? Okay, I don't see any Nancy.
Nope. Think we can move on to Article Seven. This is our last big one. So with Article Seven, we've done quite a bit of changes. And this is probably where we had more help in the feedback sessions. We came out of. Feedback sessions with our committee had been wrestling with what to do with the nominating committee with. All sorts of different things and and feedback sessions really helped us figure things out. And so we really appreciate all the member input here. What we ended up with is having a distinction between subcommittees and task forces. And the main difference between the two is that subcommittees are responsible for doing policy. Or recommending policy, considering investigating and making recommendations on policy issues of interest to the NCAC. Subcommittees are subject to the Oregon Public Meeting Law. A task force, on the other hand, is charged with implementing assigned actions. A task force does not address policy issues. It is not subject to Oregon Public Meeting Law. And this this was something that went through the county attorney and and he did agree. A task force may have a chair, but it does not require a quorum. Both subcommittee and task force chairpersons should be members of the executive board. Subcommittee shall make recommendations to the regular membership either by consensus or by a majority vote of the subcommittee membership. Subcommittee shall record and provide minutes of subcommittee meetings to the secretary. The executive board shall communicate a request to the membership for volunteers for subcommittees. Subcommittee membership should reflect a cross-section of the community. It's no change from. Before that last sentence. Volunteers should indicate a willingness to serve. By submitting a notice of interest as described in the subcommittee position application, which we will be developing in the policies and procedures. The notice of interest may include a brief biography, including interest and viewpoints and any relevant qualifications. Subcommittee members should be elected by the membership while task force members should be appointed by the executive board. So in the current bylaws, subcommittee members are appointed by the chair. This is a change. Subcommittee members or task force members may be removed from their position by the executive board for any reason. Determined to be in the best interest of the respective body. The NCAC shall have a standing bylaw subcommittee. A standing outreach task force should be responsible for promoting. Membership coordinating the recruitment of officers, subcommittee members and task force members, and we will go into each of these separately. A standing communications task force should be responsible for assisting the NCAC secretary. So again, standing committee or task force means they're there all the time. A ad hoc. Subcommittee or task force is generated as needed and disbanded when they're done. Are there any questions on this beginning part before we get into the various types?
There's a question in the chat.
Yes, good question Barry. I should have said that at the beginning. The acronyms are they're spelled out at the first time they are used in the document. And then after that, they are acronyms. So I'm. I'm looking to see if I've used an acronym here in this. Last thing.
And she is an acronym.
Yes, so the NCAC is actually spelled out in Article One, the name of the organization. And and Tom Syke, if you'd like to speak to this, this is a favorite of Tom's.
Yes, I I. I I am quite adamant about the fact that we should always define. Acronyms on first use. And in in special cases where there's sufficient ambiguity. Maybe redefine later, but that's to be avoided if possible. That keeps the document more concise. Unfortunately, people have to remember those, but fortunately fortunately, there's a parent around that term. So if you do a search on the PDF, you can find it.
So, hey, thank you.
I don't think we violated that anywhere. And I've looked a lot.
May I go on to Section A?
Yes, yes, I don't. Any amendments? Don't hear any.
I think going into all of them probably at the beginning will help too because it will flush it out. So the bylaws subcommittee, near to our hearts. It should be this part's the same should be composed of at least three and more than seven members. The subcommittee is responsible. This part's a change was responsible for reviewing the NCAC bylaws and recommending changes. Suggested by the officers, the members and or the committee members themselves. So we've added in and or the committee members themselves. The bylaws committee, so committees shall review the NCAC bylaws annually and prepare reports to the NCAC membership with recommended actions to be taken when appropriate. The term is the same. They will be elected at the June annual meeting and serve a one-year term from June first to June thirtieth. The bylaws subcommittee is responsible for the maintenance of the policies and procedures. Updates the policies and procedures shall be recommended by this bylaw subcommittee. And approved by the membership. Definition of the PNP is in Article Ten, so we'll be getting to that. On the outreach task force, this is brand new. It's kind of a combination of the old nominating committee and a new membership. Kind of a task force. So it it has the following specific tasks. It'll report to the executive board. Will recruit applicants and recommend individual candidates for offices and subcommittees to the membership for election. It will recruit applicants and recommend individual candidates for task forces. It will perform outreach to the NESCO and community to increase the membership in the NCAC. And community awareness of the role of the NCAC. So we need to make very clear here. They're not vetting and from and. Sup and. Proposing a slate of officers. Or subcommittee members. They are strictly going out and trying to find people. That making sure that they are eligible for membership and that's the extent of it. And in that. Limited scope. They can operate not under Oregon Public Meeting Law. If they do anything where they actually vet and discuss who should be recommended as an as a. Officer or a subcommittee member. Then they become a subcommittee and they are under the they are under Oregon Public Meeting Law. We got that from the county council. He was quite firm about it. And it's very difficult to vet people in a public setting. Where you're talking about people's. Whether they should be nominated or not. So this is the kind of the compromise we came to. That I think is is actually brilliant where they can go out and try to find people. Get them out there. Anyone could be nominated from the floor. They can nominate themselves. But that's the extent of it. The communications task force.
Hold up, hold up.
Oh, Jeff's got a Jeff's got a comment.
Okay.
So you have the word recommend right in the the text here. Which I think. But like, like, I assume you thought about it really hard, but that is specifically outside like like. Task force cannot make recommendations.
They can't make recommendations on policy.
I think recommending candidate like. Telling the membership, we recommend this candidate is. A recommendation. Like that that implies an endorsement.
Okay, what word would you suggest?
I would just remove the word. Recommend like I would recruit candidate applicants. I guess I would remove and recommend individual candidates. Right like from both the first two bullet points. And I don't know what the right parliamentary procedure here is like I I'm.
It would be an amendment.
Hearing opposing viewpoint before we go through and vote on this because like I don't want to go through that rigmarole again, but um. But this does seem wrong, buddy, like so.
Well, personally, I think you make a good point. So just. I'll just ask the bylaws committee, would any on the bylaws committee have an objection to Jeff's? Amendment here and then we can ask the membership. Was that Susan?
I support Jeff's amendment.
As do I.
Okay, so we should we write this up really quick and vote on it? Hopefully, like we got practice now. We can just do it.
Yes, so while you're writing the poll, Jeff.
Sure.
I'm going to. And and Tom, can you copy and paste this for him? For the poll?
Okay.
And then. I'm just going to read the communications task force part. Unless we all want to stop.
We're on eight now or seven?
We're on seven.
Okay.
It's seven.
Section B.
Section.
Section B. Yeah.
And I think that's a really good catch. See, it really does help to actually go through these. Communications Task Force. So this is something where the previous. The currently approved bylaws have a communications coordinator position. That wasn't under the officer section where it didn't really belong. And in talking with Jeff. It it sounds like. There could be a number of different people who could take different positions and responsibilities that the secretary would direct. So. And and they're not doing policy. They they would be able to meet not under Oregon Public Meeting Law, just to talk about these different things. So. So Tom, if you could scroll, I know you're doing multiple things here. But basically.
I can do multiple.
Thank you. So basically what this this does is take the the wording that we had and we did do a little bit of organization. Of the wording that are in the current bylaws for the communications coordinator position. And put it under the the task force. We think it's still a little more detailed than it needs to be for the bylaws, but. We'll tackle that next when we go to policies and procedures. And we may come back with a bylaws change, but for now it's pretty much just reorganizing what was in the. The original bylaws, so. That that's about it for the communications task force.
Okay, before we go too far, are there? Maybe we should just. Are there any amendments to this section, which is the? The. Communications Task Force and I don't. I don't see any. Jeff had one. At the previous section.
And so whenever you're ready, Jeff.
Pause for a minute.
Just let us know.
Yeah, I think I'm ready.
Okay.
And let's pop this up and make sure that you're happy with the way I did it.
And I would just like to speak in favor of Jeff's amendment. I think it's.
And and we need to go through the actual like I I move to change. I make a motion to to amend seven section B and remove. And recommend individual candidate and individual candidates in all locations where it appears.
Is it seconded?
Second.
Okay. And I'll restate it to what we have. It's it's on the screen, the motion amendment. Article seven, section B to remove and rec. Remove and recommend.
And folks who are voting like we're we're. We are actually gonna like we haven't actually started the vote, but but if anyone wants to change the vote, we'll just we'll start over again, so.
And so. So it's on the screen in front of you. Anybody have comments? Nancy spoken, I think, already in favor, anybody against? Any other comments?
I'll I'll support Nancy's comment. We did talk about the differences between the list and slate because the slate was. Sort of a recommendation in toe toe. And this kind of goes along with that. So I'll I'm I'm supporting dropping these words.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, we'll. Call for the vote on this one and it's on the screen.
Okay, and any of the people who first seventy people who voted, do any of you want to change your vote? And we've got, we're waiting for one more person. So if you're having trouble or something and you need us to wait another minute, just speak up now or I'll end the. Okay, I'm ending the poll. So I am also voting in favor of the amendment. So we have twenty seven out of twenty seven in here.
Yay.
Okay, that amendment passes.
Okay, so. Now the main motion will be as amended. So when you have a chance, Jeff, just change that in the poll.
We don't have to vote on it if nobody objects.
No. No, it's just the wording of the. Of the main motion will have changed now. Okay, so were there any comments on?
Not on C.
C.
No.
Okay, section D is other. It just specifies how. New standing or ad hoc subcommittees and task forces are established and the details of their operation will be specified in the. PNP. Can you scroll beyond C? We're now on D.
You said C, so I went back.
Sorry. So yeah, so it's basically that how that the as we've mentioned that the. They'll be just established as needed by the the membership, the. The. Executive Board will establish the task forces, but they'll be ratified by the membership. And subcommittees will be established by the membership. The purpose composition and operations of additional subcommittees should be included in the PNP. If those subcommittees complete their purpose, then references to it may be deleted from the policies and procedures. Task forces may be constituted by the executive board as needs arrive. Arise, the executive board shall move to ratify the creation of the task force at the next. Regular membership meeting of the NCAC. And that's it for Article Seven.
Okay, any amendments to Article Seven? Okay, any amendments to Article Seven? Do not see any, Nancy.
Okay, thank you. Article Eight, Parliamentary Authority. Wording is slightly changed, but this has been the parliamentary authority. All along, the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised. Shall be covered the governing rules of the operation of the N C A C, subcommittees and task forces. These rules shall apply in all cases unless they are inconsistent with Oregon Public Meeting Law. Tillamook County ordinances or N C A C bylaws, and there's an extra space in there, Tom.
Oh. I hate that.
Okay. And that's all we have for section, Article Eight.
Okay. I don't see any amendments or comments, Nancy, so.
Okay, thank you. So Article Nine, let's make sure we didn't lose the comma.
Yeah. Sorry.
It's okay.
Did the wrong thing.
I know how much you love word, so.
Oh, yes, I do. I just.
Did we get rid of that space, Tom?
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
That's why I went off of the weeds when it.
Can't see it. Mending the bylaws, Article Nine, so there are just a couple of changes. It specifies the timing and the referral. To the bylaw subcommittee for, for study. Which it didn't before. So all proposed amendments, regardless of their source of initiation. Shall be referred to the bylaws subcommittee for study and recommendation. At least one month before the meeting in which the vote is to be taken.
Soon as I'm done here, hold on.
My, could you mute? Thank you. Unless otherwise instructed by the vote of the membership or directed by the executive board, the bylaw subcommittee shall set a time for the vote to be taken. The bylaw subcommittee shall present its review of any proposed amendments to the N C A C membership and such a member is to ensure timely, inclusive and transparent decision-making. After review and approval by the Tillamook County Council, any amendment shall be voted on at the next membership meeting, provided that written notice of the amendments. Has been emailed to all members at least ten days prior to the meeting. Amendment of these N C A C bylaws should require a two-thirds majority vote of the N C A C membership present at any. Membership N C A C meeting. This is a change. The current bylaws say simple majority. The amended bylaws shall become effective immediately upon approval, and that is not a change. So I will just say, other than the provisos we have in our main motion for any transition issues. The amended bylaws become effective immediately upon the vote. That's it for Article Nine.
All right, any amendments to section Article Nine? Okay, don't see any.
Thank you. Our last article, other bylaws provisions. So this takes some of the existing wording, maybe slightly modified. From the other locations of the original bylaws, but isn't really a big change. So like, section A is governing laws. And it's organized under statewide planning goal one, which is adopted by the State Land Conservation and Development Commission. And be, and the N C A C operates. Pursuant to order number thirteen dash oh three four is adopted by Tillamook County Board of Commissioners on May first, two thousand thirteen. So all that was, it's just been moved into this article. The N C A C is organized as a public body, as defined by the O P M L, the Oregon Public Meeting Law. Policies and procedures, the N C A C shall be established a policies and procedures document. That lists the rules detailing the administration and implementation of the functions of the N C A C. The P and P may be amended with a simple majority vote of the N C A C membership. These rules shall not conflict with these bylaws or the O P M L. And then we have a bunch of definitions that we're not going to go through here unless somebody particularly wants to discuss them. But they were looked at by our lawyers on our committee and Tom Prohodich helped with this, so. Why don't you just keep scrolling, Tom, unless somebody wants me to read all of these? Okay, so I know Guy had mentioned that he would like to have a definition of citizen. And we'll, we'll take that up at a later date if that's okay with you, Guy. And, and your, his recommendation for def- for this definition of citizen is basically. What we have as a definition for member, so it would be. We'll, we'll, we'll take that up next if that's okay. And then, section E is funding, and this was in the previous bylaws. We've just moved it into. The section, all funds received by the N C A C should be used to offset the costs of the N C A C. Or for the specific purposes for which they are given. And that is it.
Okay, any. Any amendments to any section of the document? I don't, I don't see any. I think we're done reviewing it, Nancy.
Yeah, does anyone have any further questions? I, I think if we aren't, then I think we're done. We have to vote.
Yeah, Nancy, can you give me the correct text to add to the. Motion to reflect the, the amendment?
Yes, can you stop sharing, Tom?
Perhaps. It's buried under quite a few windows over here. Okay.
There we go. And I'm going to share the. The main motion, and I'm going to. Oops, that's wrong. Nope, it isn't. Get it here. Okay, so. On behalf of the N C A C bylaw subcommittee and with the approval of Tillamook County Council, I move that the present ballot bylaws be rescinded and the bylaws revision. Submitted by the committee as amend and amended today be adopted with the following provisos. So I think you just add. Submitted by the committee and amended. Or as amended today. How does that sound, Michael?
Well, I don't think you need today, but that's okay. I think that's fine. Echo's job.
Okay.
Bingo.
All right, if that's all we need, I am ready to go when. I, I guess, does, does Mark need to say something?
I think that at this point, we're just, oh, I see a question. Before we see a question, I saw a question from Guy there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is just.
Okay.
Okay. I guess I'm along with Wyatt, I'm like, training thing, but if we rescind this document. Which is the first phrase, how do we revise, how do we revise it?
So what happens is the, the document we're rescinding is the currently approved bylaws from October.
Right.
And this bylaws, the bylaws proposal that we have today as amended, will take the place of it immediately. Except for the provisos.
You can revise. A non-existent bylaw. I guess that's my.
This is a special case. You bring up good question. This is a special case. This is a bylaws revision. It's called, when you, when you completely rewrite and restructure bylaws. This takes the place of the previous bylaws. So in most cases, when you, when you amend bylaws. You're just doing amendments to certain places within the bylaws.
Right.
This is a special case where we are replacing the existing bylaws with a whole new document. And so before we can re- we replace it, we, we take out the old one.
I think Guy is just being pedantic about the word bylaws revision.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's called, Robert's Rules of Order calls this a bylaws revision, because it's not. It's not a new bylaws in terms of like when an organization is created, you have new bylaws. But it's just like them in that it's replacing existing ones, but it's a whole new bylaws. So they call that a, a bylaws revision.
I trust Robert's rules, whoever Robert was.
Okay.
We, we love Robert's rules in this committee.
Robert's rules goes back to Civil War period, by the way.
Who was Robert?
He was a general. And we all listen to generals.
Which side, Michael?
Uh, yes.
Which side?
Point of order.
Okay, okay, all right.
Motion on the floor here.
Let's, uh. Okay.
And it doesn't need a second, Nancy.
No.
Is that, okay.
No, it's already been moved and it's been on the floor, so all we need is to go to a vote.
Let's take the vote.
Okay.
I see something else in the chat.
From Tom, I think. Nice, okay. Good comments, positive comments there. Okay, the vote is up.
So we've been at twenty-three out of twenty-six for an hour and twenty-four, so. If, if you are stuck and still trying to vote and need me to wait for a minute, I'll give you a few seconds to say so in the chat. Okay, now we're at twenty-five and, okay, twenty-six to twenty-six, and I, I am voting in favor, so. Share the results. We have twenty-four out of twenty-seven in favor and three out of twenty-six against.
Yee-haw, okay. So that, that motion passes and that is a job well done by the bylaws committee. And really from, from the bylaws committee in terms of their leadership, but also from the community in terms of. Of attending and providing feedback, really good feedback. That helped sort of craft the document that we've just approved, so. Thank you very much to the community and thank you a lot to the bylaws committee. What a job, well done.
Thank you all. This was, and thank you for hanging in there today, too.
I would, I'd, I'd like to note that this whole process and this organization, the N C A C. Has been lauded by the County Board of Commissioners for the work being done here, the organization, the communication. The extraordinary process and production that this whole organization represents. They notice.
Yeah. Good comment. Okay. Thank you, Mark. Yeah, thank you very much, everybody, and. Thank you, Nancy, for your leadership too on the, in the bylaws committee, so. A little bit of a, a little bit of a relax here, I think, coming up for you guys, so well deserved.
We can take a, a deep.
Take a break, take a break, okay. All right.
Because it, it has been just a terrific committee to work with, so thanks, each, every member, and thank you all. We're done.
You were done, okay.
Let's go to work.
We'll, we'll, we'll close the meeting out then and. Everybody have a great rest of your day.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Are you saying meeting adjourned?
I think, I think Mark's already gone.